Welcome, everybody, to the fishberg planning board Tuesday, December 7th. My first item, I'm just gonna say roll call for which president at the moment. We'll save here on his thing, say your name, Peter.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Tracy.
Here.
Ellen.
Here.
Alex.
Here.
Paula, here. Amanda. And here. All meetings of the kitchen or planning board are open to your public. This is not meant as a public party debate in all aspects of the meeting. It simply means it's been made shut, including all discussions and votes is open to public view. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing, please raise your hand and the board will acknowledge you at the appropriate time during the hearing. The board will also monitor any participants that are attending sessions, questions asked in the appropriate time. Virtual attendees are asked to use the reason hearing function to be acknowledged. State your name and address. Two, approach the center table and either stand or sit. This allows you to be seen very clearly by everyone in attendance. Three, the planning board request that comments be limited to no more than five minutes and it is within time. Please be advised that F A T V is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting. Public broadcast may ask that anyone in the audience be recording this meeting. And please identify yourselves so we can know by state of the game. Our first item, our agenda item, our approval not required plans. Some approval will be required, but we don't have that. Our second agenda item this evening, our minor site planning on the regions. We have one, but I think half a while before the application flows of the dumpster relocation, the sidewalk line. Change located thirty six flat rock road. And are they attending virtual this evening?
I'm not sure. I thought they were shit, somebody that has their.
In a minute, let's just enter the room.
Yes, Greg, you're unmuted. You just have to put the microphone, you can see.
Hello, everyone. I'm Greg McIntosh, the project architect from Lincoln Architects. We're here tonight to go over the minor site plan changes that were involved during the process of construction. First one is in the upper left-hand corner. The dumpster was relocated from an area that was toward the front parking lot of the building, the proposed building to just between that EV car charging station and the existing building. This is a much more discreet location and we found it to be an improvement for the users. So that dumpster was relocated. Now, if you could pan to the right to show the luck way. The original planning board drawings showed the sidewalk that you see going straight to Flat Rock Road all the way down. It was thought that.
It blocked you.
P a better solution to. Hello. Hello.
You're cutting in and out, Greg.
I'm sorry about that. Basically, what we're doing is where we are having the students cross the street and that connects with existing pathways that are connecting the dormitory to the academic buildings without having to involve Flat Rock Road or Prospect Street or anything like that. We felt it to be a safer transition and a route for the kids to take between the dormitory and the classroom buildings. So those were the two changes that were made.
Does the board have any questions regarding?
I was just, for anyone's interest, I was just gonna pull up the. Just pop the air, so that you can get a better idea of what it looks like. We have these beautiful near maps now, which which are up to date. So this is, this is the dormitory building here. This is the existing, the old dormitory building. So the dumpster pad will be up over here. And the crossing is right. In this, it's a little bit old, I think. It hasn't been in yet, but it's right about here.
Yeah, it's a little closer to Flat Rock, but it's pretty much there. There you go. Yeah.
There's still a pretty significant space between the dumpster and any butter anyway, so I don't.
Are there any department comments?
Uh, no.
Does any board have any questions or comments or?
I'll make a motion to approve the minor modification to the site plan for thirty six flat rock road.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second by Alex. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same vote. Roll call vote. Amanda.
Hi.
Peter.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Ellen.
Aye.
Alex.
Aye.
Paula. Aye. Right, you're all set. Have a great holiday.
Thank you very much. Have a happy holiday. I appreciate it.
We are now into our hearing segment, which is most of the evening. Welcome, everyone. Our first item this evening, we have a special permit, site plan review for the applicant speedy cannabis is proposing the marijuana delivery operator and courier establishment over their request to withdraw application at this time. It turns out that the following period on the legislature, their application is still valid.
Make a motion to give things to withdraw with the presence.
Motion's been made.
Sure.
Second by Tracy. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, opposed, roll call vote. Amanda.
Hi.
Peter.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Ellen.
Aye.
Alex.
Aye.
Paula, aye. Our next hearing this evening, a special permanent site plan review, pristine choice Realty, providing interior demolition of a four-unit multi-family can rehabilitate and reinstate the building of a three-unit dwelling with new parking area at one forty-three Daniel Street in the neighborhood of this district. If you could feel free to want to come sit up. So, two things. So we're here for a special permit to reinstate the news.
Yes.
And well as parking site.
Alright.
And I'll just mention that there are some outstanding fees that need to be addressed before you can get permit. So that's gonna be part.
Right. Were you aware of those fees?
I believe all the fees were taken care of, or which fees?
So we have Board of Health. So the note from the Board of Health for the meeting was the Board of Health sent an order to secure the vacant property October fifteenth. A ticket and fine for failure to secure was issued November sixth in the amount of two hundred dollars. Board Health hired Jared Glass to secure the property and incurred costs of twenty-one hundred dollars for the work. An invoice was sent to the owner for payment. Failure to pay will result in a lean place on the property. Owner was also ordered to register the property on November sixth in the vacant property registry. To date, the property is still not registered.
I wasn't aware of that fee.
Okay.
So, we'll be checking with the Board of Health.
Yeah. Yeah.
Says we can't issue a permit. That's, we can talk about it.
This, just so you know, just to clarify, the city has, part of our code is if there are outstanding fees of any kind, they have to be satisfied before board can issue a permit. That's why.
So, wanna. I want just one, an examination of some of the material.
Yes.
This is the layout.
Yes. Yes, here the six. Parkly box here to the right.
Yes.
Those are the ones that are reviewed from three units. I've been satisfied since parking spots are you know.
It does. However, there was a retaining wall was involved. And the plan for the retaining wall is a different marking layout.
I have it up, I have it up now.
So.
So this is the plan.
So that needs, so that needs to be resolved.
This is the plan that shows on your retaining wall plan, which is different than your plan on the site plan.
Quite a bit, little bit different there.
Wesley, Wesley did one for me and I believe for the retaining wall, we had him adjusted.
You just want to not do the same thing. They're not, they're not matching, we need to know which one we're going to be able to. We need to. Be reconciled.
Yeah. This is.
Different, different than the one we were provided?
Believe.
Yeah, yeah, it has to be. So is that a copy? Cause I was gonna say, anything that we take, we have to keep with the board, so.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so that that's even different than the, that's even different than all three of them. Now we have three different. It's different than all three of them. You have three different plans now.
Right.
This one's different than this. It's different than this. There's, there's, there's three different plans.
So this one's dated twenty twenty-one.
Um, that's not.
No.
I think that was when you were in front of zoning, when you were trying to add a photo family.
Well, so we want, so we want to talk. So, we want to talk. It's like, we're gonna end up continuing this because of the plan, but also the. So we, we need to know which plan you're going, which plan you're going with. And on that plan, because there are some things that are missing, we want you to really put it on the plan before you come back. With the site plan for us to.
Okay.
Some of the standard things that we have on the polls, you have a three. We want to see where you're gonna put the dumpster location, so you have a certain dumpster location on here. You may add that. You're going to add when you do your design, you're going to add any guard rail. There's a guard rail here on this plan, so it looks like there is a guard rail behind this one, but it was not on the other one. So you want to make sure that you're showing the guard rail. You're showing the trash. When we talk about a trash, it should be a closure. Typically, it's like white, like white vinyl. We want to see decorate.
If it's, if it's, yeah, I was gonna say, if it's behind the building, you want to see it from the street, but the problem is the grade drops off so much, I don't think you can have it behind the building.
Previously was here on the left. So you get to the left of the building in the bottom.
Down here?
On the stairs.
Yeah, on the stairs to the left.
Okay, right.
That's where they had all the. I'm, I'm seeing what I'm doing. You guys, I'm, we're talking about gray, gray hair.
Which is, which is fine. If you can do that, if you can make that work and then you put it up that like around it, so you can open it up.
This is the right, it's to the left, on the left.
Yeah, I know. Where the, where the, where these dots are.
Yeah.
Next to.
Yeah.
See my cursor moving up?
Yeah, I see, I see. But where they had it before was to the left of that.
Oh.
Yeah.
Under the stairs?
Yeah, under the stairs.
The stairs.
Yeah.
That might, that might be doable too. You can just, you can just make a note on the plan, you know, you know, trash screen, screen under the stairs and they can just do, you know, like a, like some sort of, you know, vinyl door enclosure or something to pull them out, put them back, just so you don't see them. It's a pretty visible corner. We just, it protects a lot of things. It protects people from seeing them and it protects the trash from blowing everywhere.
Exactly.
So.
Notes are good. We want to see that on the plan. So when it's on the plan, we're approving the plan.
Yeah, it was a little last minute and we tried to reach out to Wesley, but he's not there anymore.
Charlie works for different companies.
Yeah, so it was a little tough to get everything together.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean.
So this is like the, the, the lights. You got six spaces on site. We also would be removing that two off-site, we cannot approve.
Yeah, the seven and eight that show right here, the two on-street spaces, get rid of them altogether. Cause we can't approve on-street spaces, cause they don't belong to this property. It's city property. So six is fine. If you're doing a three-family, that's no problem. Just get rid of the ones on the street. They don't need to be on there. Because, you know, again, we're only approving as many as we need.
And my question to that was the church behind there, they have a lot of spaces right behind the property. And I was working out a contract with them, see if they can give me two spots.
What end was that end? If you're already doing, so the six spaces required for a three-family, why, why do, unless you think you need more of your tenants?
Well, no, for the fourth unit.
So that's not, we're not here for a fourth.
No, no, that was a question that I had. In the future, I can add it. But that would be something that could be done in, you know, since it was originally a four-unit building.
Parking on site. So, we'd like to see it site. So, I don't know that we, we'd be looking through to like a kind of permanent lease. When people are hard, when it's a monthly fee, isn't gonna work.
That wouldn't work. It would only work if you can guarantee a law, a, a, a long-term, like hundred-year lease agreement.
Right.
These are my spaces. But even, but even that, we then have to have a conversation of how far away they are, how accessible they are. It's, it's not a kind, it's not necessarily a slam dunk. That, that's okay. I think that what you're doing now, if, if you, if you want to do a three-family, let's do it as a three-family. I, I, I was gonna say, I was gonna wait till the end, but since we're on the topic, I had a relatively lengthy conversation with the war counselor. I don't know if you've had, if you've ever talked to Council Bochman, but Council Bochman and I had a conversation about this property and he suggested that because it wasn't enough parking per whole family, that the, one of the permanent conditions with the site plan would be that we make sure that all plumbing, kitchens and bathrooms in the basement are completely green. And that his suggestion was that the basement be permanent storage, like storage areas for the, for the three units above.
Okay. Would I be able to combine the first floor with the basement? So now it's, I mean, it would be in the future, it would be like five bedroom. So it's a three-bedroom now. If I would change the layout to a five, would that be feasible?
I think the only time it's a concern is if there's, if there's a bathroom or a kitchen down there. That's a problem because long-term it turns into a use. And that's the one thing we don't want to see.
But I say never be a.
Yeah, I, I understand. But I'm also saying that if, if that were possible, that there not be a kitchen or a bathroom in that lower level. Or about, I suppose a bathroom. I suppose kitchen is the big issue. You know, having a kitchen of any kind in the lower level. You, that's true. You could, I, I suppose you, you might, especially this bedroom, you might want a bath down there, but the, the war two council's concern is that you, that we approve it, especially if there's finished space in the basement, that over time, they illegally get converted to four, to four units. So then one of the permanent conditions would be if we go, if you, we go through this plan, is that if we have three families forever, that it not ever be a four-family. So that way, if anyone illegally converts it, their violation of zoning, they're subject to a fine of three hundred dollars a day.
Right.
Right, probably. I mean, unless you get reapproved for a new, right, for a new site plan or a new use. Right, exactly.
Also, if you want to, five bedroom, you need another parking space.
Oh, would I?
So it's with, with three or under, it's two, it's two per unit, about how many bedrooms there.
It's like five.
It's still two per unit about. Who is the most we require per unit? So it's, it's one for one bedroom, one and a half for two bedroom, two, two or three or one. But as of right now, the floor plan, the floor plan you provided doesn't have a base finish at all on there, right? The list, the one you provided, it's just per second, per floor.
My thinking, the original one had four units.
Well, show, well, if you have, if you have it, our next meeting, you might as well give us the layout if you've already paid.
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do.
So we can see what it looks like. We can make that part of. Part of the approval.
Right on it.
Yeah.
I would just say, I, like I said, I would just read, read, there can't be a kitchen in that basement.
Yeah, just fine. I'll just combine it. That's fine.
Please bring back what it is you were going to do to write it, exterior of the building. Well, there goes. Oh, nothing like that.
Okay. Color are not show.
Come back with something.
Yeah, probably want to see elevations. Just what the exterior is gonna look like in general, when you want, what improvements are going to be.
This should be on here.
There is.
New siding.
Okay.
This is.
Like, so it's like, you need some detail about what. Well, I think it's not.
That's after this, right?
Are you saying, so it's gonna be new siding? I'm in Europe, perhaps.
There's, there's no real windows there, so you kind of have to. That's, this, this is today, that photo, so.
Yeah, so that whole middle part there is gonna be.
This is the left inside.
Look like this ability to put any landscape.
The grades are tough too. I mean, it drops straight down from the street. If you stand there, it's, it's like that phone.
Are you keeping the porches the same in the front?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, this from the back?
That was the back, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, cause maybe it's like think about something, thinking about something. Is there something maybe in a different color? Colors, it's all gonna be one color? Do you do a band of another?
Possibly gonna be the same, like same color, yeah. Same, same color.
Built from. Took that from Plymouth. Yeah, there's not much you can do with the.
So what are the type, what are the types of mechanicals that you're gonna be doing and where the mechanicals could be located? Cause we don't want to see like any equipment you need to come up the front.
No, no, everything's gonna be condo style in the same, in the same unit.
So you get, but what are you doing, you getting mini splits or?
Yeah, probably the mini splits.
So then you, so then the condenser units need to be, they can't be like near the parking area because they can't interfere with parking.
Right.
So show them on the plan where you're gonna be behind the building on the, on the left-hand side, which would be fine. You know, you just don't want them, you don't want them, obviously they can't go in front of the building because it's close on the sidewalk, but you, you don't want them interfering with the driveway access, the parking or the stairs. So they have to be behind the building or on the other side.
So kind of those navy arms where they do both dual functions inside of the unit, you know, like a mechanical inside the unit. Yeah.
That was, yeah, okay. Then if you don't have condenser units, that's fine. A lot of time then now when they're doing the, that was many splits they require, and that's units have to be outside, but.
Thinking of running everything inside. It already got converted into gas.
Oh, in that case, I mean, if you're doing, doing gas heater. Yeah, that's fine.
Typical condition is not to have any of the.
Right.
Anything else? We want to know about the guard rail type.
It shows on the plan as a fence, this is key, the fence on top of this, on top of the look at this one. See, it says proposed block retaining wall with all protection plans.
So when we talk about the fence, we talk.
They're gonna have, they're probably gonna have a four, a fence on top of that retaining wall.
Yeah.
It's cold, cause it's a seven-foot. So what most likely will require is because chain length doesn't weather all that great, the black coated chain link, the vinyl coated chain link probably will, tends to look a little bit better.
This is the plan. Right on it, like the fence. Well, you know, my low vision, the stuff of the.
Yeah.
This is, if this is the, then you have to work on getting your plan for the routine on. Except. That's, that would be necessary. To follow up. Yes.
If you, no matter who you hire, that's Haley Ward, who did this plan, or Wes at his new company, both people are familiar with what we're gonna require. So you can tell them about this conversation. You can probably, you can watch it afterwards if you want to get, make sure everything's in there. That way, there's no next month. And then obviously before next month, each of these paid, make sure you, I can't tell that it, that it's paid, so we, so we're difficult.
Sounds good, yeah, no, we'll have it all ready.
Now, some, the, as a follow-up, we'll project the, with the, it's the merge for two lots, so that's all one lot. Separate lots. Follow up with the K and R plan that would just.
Which your engineer can, whoever you hire, again, whether it's Haley Ward or Marjorie, whoever, they don't know what we're talking about. And Paula has a good point that, you know, you worry at some point in the future that someone tries to do something with that lot, or you sell a three-family and by mistake, they don't convey the parking lot with it. Or just make it all one parcel. It's gotta be anyway, so you might as well.
Is there maybe a showing, also any lighting when we're looking at the building too, like?
Well, I'll get everything added on.
Nice to see things look a lot, a lot nicer. One of us, and like, we're gonna see vinyl siding, it's like, look on that a little bit, maybe you have a different, a different either texture or something like, you know, you know, one elevation, but it's.
Right.
Something to break it up, so it's not just one giant block.
I know what you're saying.
Makes sense. Or in the middle or the center.
I was really thinking of just keeping it. Our options.
I mean, new, new vinyl side will do water, even though, even though it's a rip angle building, it will look better. Yeah. Oh, yeah, no, I, I, I completely agree with you. That if, if there's a way that you can, you know, we've done a lot of them recently where they've done you know, one color and a band in one color, or, you know, the first floor is, you know, or three-quarters of the house is regular vertical vinyl, and then they use shakes on the top. You know, whatever, I, I, you know, you can, I think you get the gist that just make it look nice. It's a, it's a very square building, so whatever you can do, if anything, to stick out, I mean, most of it, the material cost should be similar anyway. It's not a question of mixing up colors or mixing up materials. Going back to what Paula said about lighting, the only thing about lighting is you don't want light shining into neighbors' houses. That's why we want to see them all down facing lights. You know, obviously you're gonna need them for your entryways and your stairs, to make sure they're not shining into neighbors' houses.
You have a post or something in there.
Yeah, there's really no neighbors next to these red hairs, so there's a lot. I think it's just, I don't even think they want me to.
I couldn't tell when I was there.
And then to the left of the house, there's, it's just a lot.
Okay. I like your idea about adding that into myself because like.
Right. Right. Right.
That's.
So that's why, you know, I wanted to do the four unit, but it's fine. But it'll be kind of the same.
I think the three fits with it. Yes, you know, and I know you don't have any neighbors, you have to speak of, but
Yeah.
On the other side of the corner, the building is incredibly high explosion. And when you drive up that street, that's exactly what you see.
Yeah, right.
And you see it plain as day. So what the board is saying to you is when you come in next time, we want to see the exterior elevations, not just siding.
Right.
Not just siding with one color. What's up, particles into it. You change up things, like the vice chair said, change up materials, change up color schemes, make it look because it's a very prominent building. Because it's a very prominent building.
Before we get to, um. Public comment, um, I just wanna read EPW, um, so our departments get sent this and they. They give us their comments. EPW has a comment here, it says DPW engineering will require a curb cut permit. To be obtained from the new parking lot, so basically where the entrances are. Uh, driveway apron must be constructed with concrete and utilize two foot corner blocks. Uh, driveway reconstruction must be performed by an actively bonding contractor who's in good standing with TPW engineering. Engineering advises extra attention to be paid to the elevations on the front porch step. So as to not require approachment to the sidewalk right of way. So I think what they're saying is. This, this. This, uh, the bottom of this. So, so I think they're talking about this stair, anywhere here, so this stair can't be over your property line. So be cautious about where that stair ends, because it's gotta end on your property. Uh, I, I believe that, and you can, you can reach out to DPW engineering too if you have a question, um. I'm sure Ryan or whoever is, can, can, if you, if you're serious about, you know, that. And then they were basically saying, when you work with this area right here, this curb cut. Anywhere that's not on your property, the city requires a city contractor to do it. And they have a list of people who know what they're doing, and they work within the city, how, you have to pay them to do it. So you might have a certain contractor that does your parking lot, but when you get to this, to, to the. To, to the, to the city property.
Yeah.
It's, it's not even the street, it's the city property, so it's basically, you can see that your line there, in line with the front of your building here. Anything, anything on this side of that has to be done by a city approved contractor.
Okay.
That's what they were trying. Just keep that in mind. If you have questions, you can reach out to DPW engineer, they can help you with that.
Please give a, a lot of thought. To the layout of the building, in the way the exterior is gonna look. Especially window placement and window treatment.
Yeah.
And then when your plan is just talking about blocking a lot of those porches. So are they gonna have windows there instead?
It's gonna be a wall, it's gonna be basically a wall.
Just lock it up.
Yeah.
Well, what I'm saying is when you choose windows.
Yeah.
Make sure the windows are all, the natural house.
Right, right, right.
Sure, when you side the house, it's sided nicely, not siding, it comes up to the window and. You wanna see a nice looking window treatment. And trim around the windows, and not side and become boom. We want the building to look good, and those are the things I would be looking for.
Alright.
I will represent those elevations next time, which you need.
Was, was there any further, um, problems coming, or is there anybody?
One forty seven, yeah, I, I, I'm totally aware of.
You just give us your name and then.
And I, uh, it gets solved in, in dealing with this particular property. But property that's, uh, that's to the, uh, main property. And then we, we, we knew that we needed an extra parking space. Well, therefore, uh. When we saw the beautification of the building. Doing the entire building, including the roof and everything else. It goes with it. Uh, then it's the repair and we told the, uh. We started on the new methods for building to look better. But it used to be a full, full family, uh, she likes, you know, uh, but now it's gonna be only three. And that's how we are working on this particular one right now, we have, working on. Uh, armies that, that we're dealing with right now. And we probably agree with, uh, you guys are saying as far as, you know, the difference with the. Siding and making a good pressure to do this, the buildings, next door to ours. They have some beautification like. Property right actually.
You've owned it for three plus years, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
Looking at this now, it looks like the fire, the fire was in twenty fifteen. Coming up on ten years, so it'd be really nice to get this done.
Yeah, I'm trying.
Yep.
And we're gonna need the sprinklers, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, so you go.
Any further, are there any further public comment? Is there anybody on? And then.
There's three, but no one raised.
Okay, and then do any, any more members have any, you know, questions or?
Uh, hey, yeah, I mean, I think, I think I'm fine with it. You have the parking now, so just do, do the things we talked about. Pay, pay what's.
I've had, I've been having a tough time buying a sprinkler.
I don't know how to help you there. Yes, uh, did, did you ask building department if they, if they know?
No, we haven't asked.
So the other thing you can do is you can talk to, uh, some of the, some of the other multifamily property owners in the city. I would almost guarantee you, someone at City Hall can help you with that, whether it's Mary Jo Bohard, who's our economic development coordinator. Or the building department, they can maybe put you in touch with another builder who's done this recently.
Yeah.
Uh, I can think of a few, we can talk at some point if you want to.
Yeah.
Um, you know, whether they've done sprinklers recently or not, I don't know, but. There are, there's a lot of multifamily renovations going, so, um, particularly if you see someone working, I can tell you right now, I think it's, what is it, twenty nine Pleasant Street? Um, they're doing it, they're doing a three or a four family right now, the one we did. On the back of the hill, um, they're working on it now, cause I was driving past, and maybe if you. Not buy there someday, and they're working, and you ask them, cause I guarantee you, they're doing the same thing as you, they're re, they're. Recreating a three family, or they're creating a three family out of what used to be a multifamily, so they, they probably needed to.
Reason why. In front of our board, because your business.
Oh, first, thank.
And it requires twenty feet of frontage, and there's no setbacks, so the building. If it was not conforming.
Make motion to continue to our January meeting, which is.
A motion's been made the second to continue. For our January meeting, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say oppose, roll call votes. Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Kristin?
Aye.
Alvin?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paula, aye.
Alright, see, that's all, thank you. That'd be all, ladies.
Alright, thank you so much, appreciate it. Thank you, I see you next month.
Right, our next decision, I'm. Now, uh, Dallas Valerius, from the Department of Site. For off, offsite parking, for the renovation of a senior dwelling in a location of three thirty six Clarin Street and parking location. Three thirteen Clarin Street in the residential party district. And let me say, there, one of us this evening is, we're really, we're talking about parking, this is, um. And when you're talking about renovation of the two unit dwelling. That we've been exploring, under the auspices of the provision of the ordinance.
Excuse me, I, I can't hear you.
Sorry, and so, sorry, and I'm like putting stuff in. Um, in regards to this, the board is only more focusing on parking, not the actual renovation of the building, the renovation of the building, it's done under different. So, special permit site from review, the boards will be addressing, is focused.
So fancy what you're saying, we control parking, not it being a three family.
And it's two problems.
Alright, so our four. Is the output. I'll start with the onsite parking. No, we're the offsite parking, if you wanna just give us a summary, we can open there.
Yeah, so this is the three thirty six Clarendon Street. Um, we will be making some, um, parking spaces, where you see number one. Right here, here, right? And there is a parking space on, um, like there.
One up here and the next two down here, yeah.
Um.
Bedrooms in a, bedroom.
Right now, yes.
Yes, why?
It's a two.
This, three, two bedroom apartment?
Um, it's two, we're planning on making it three.
Okay.
But I think it's, uh, I apologize, it's the way, uh. Um, but it's three.
There's three, three bedroom units, okay.
Yeah. Three family, three them.
Currently only have one on site. Be creating two more, with the addition of, of there.
That's correct.
Alright, so this is the. Correct, this is the one parking space that shows on the, the wild street side?
Okay.
Okay, and then. And then you're talking about creating two spaces right here?
That is correct, yes.
Is there any?
Those spaces are.
Well, you know, I have a, you know. The same as it's no storage, why can't you do, make that, uh, go deeper? With that, and make, yeah, why don't you go deeper with that? Or at least two, two more spaces there.
That is correct, that's what we were actually, um, wanting, um, I believe, uh, we were told. Stacking, it's not something that we, it was things like that, I think it was not sure.
Oh, stacking?
Yeah.
We can, we can look at that, because if you assign it as, um, is it? You would say one and two. And then we're looking at that, so when you're looking at that, you're looking at stack as. Front of the other being, it's to one unit.
Three, three six, Daniels, three seventy six Clarendon.
Cause that's, that's rela- relatively, but it looks like you'd be removing the deck, yes, to be removed anyways, so. Definitely looks like.
It gets, I, I think it gets, uh, the, the closer you get to the building, the tighter it gets, because there's a little bit of a grade change. You see where. Where it says deck, it all costs.
And they're gonna be.
Uh, existing decks to be removed, you're right, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, I suppose if you can, if you can do that, and we can keep marking on site. I, 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 I know that, you know, again, I mentioned it the last time, while I was on the public council of Bushman, we talked about this property. And his initial comment was, three thirteen is too far away, that people just aren't gonna park there, they're just gonna, you know. If they're not gonna park on site, they're gonna find somewhere else to park. Um, so if we can make those two extra spaces there, and we go too deep on Clarendon, you could even. I mean, looking at, looking at the photo, you could, you could go too deep on the De, De Lisle Street side even easier. Um, you have the bulkhead that ki- kinda gets in the way, but, I mean, it's. The depth here, especially when you get, you know, closer to the side, you could, I think easily fit two cars that on the, the Lisle Street side.
Clarification, that is.
Blue Rose Street, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you for saying that.
It's alright, we have another street on that plan that doesn't even exist.
Which actually exists on Google Maps, by the way. That's where it comes from. Yeah.
Did make a note.
Alright, so, um. Did you, did you agree with that, that, that consensus, that we could fit two there and four on the?
All of the parking on site.
Yeah.
Because, because I would like nothing more than to not deal with the three thirteen, not that. That building doesn't need work to begin with, it's just that it's too far away from this property. So if we can have what's required in our city statute for parking on this site. It, I, I, you know, while stacking's not ideal. It's certainly functional when you're talking about three, because the idea is each unit would have one of those stacked spaces. So you could pack, park, you know, a tenant and tenant in front of each other, so they're not blocking another tenant in, they're blocking their own property in. Okay. Alright, we have, we have discretion though.
I will, you can bring up.
Oh, that's five there, right? So, yeah, see, well, that's what I was saying, I think the grade, the grade issue on the right inside then.
Is that something maybe that? Yeah.
Yeah, uh, it might be better if I blow up my street, and he does, yeah, let me call the streets, maybe it's there. It's really in the night, I've forgotten all this. Uh, let's see. That fence is long. I can't get further back. Um, yeah, you can't see anything from this.
It said two thousand nineteen.
Yeah, I know, I was gonna, they sometimes.
New one, I, what's that? There's a new, a new, uh, photo of the street.
Yeah. Well, I just, like I said, you can't see one on that side. I mean, because the prob, the problem with this is, five doesn't solve the problem. So, like, it's, it, it only, we only get rid of three thirteen if we can get six onsite. You, you see what she's talking about? You understand, yours, this is the plan you previously sent in. See, it says it only has three on the Clarendon Street side, can you fit four there? And, and, and have the.
Two, two here and two here and then two here.
Right, but there's not, there's only three on that.
Yeah, there might be a piece of concrete.
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be a curb cut there that you have to do, but that would be, you have to do that anyway. As, as an aside, um. As an aside, you, you probably know this if you've been in the property, they just did the first coating pavement on it, and they're doing sidewalks in the spring. You should probably, no matter what happens here, even if you don't start construction, you should probably reach out to DPW. And although they're aware of the plan now, because they saw it, they should probably do those curb cuts when they do that sidewalk, so they don't have to cut into the brand new sidewalk. Yeah, yeah, um. Let me, let me just, since we're on it, she just, I, I didn't realize, um, I'm sure Nick or, uh, Ryan. Oh, you had a comment, so please apply for curb cut permit online, the city will be. Says please apply for curb cut permit online, the city will be completing the reconstruction of Clarendon Street in the spring of twenty five. Please contact engineering prior to twenty twenty five construction season so that we can discuss the secrecy of this project of final payment on the land. Um, if they. If they pave Clarendon, if they put the final top code on, and then we need to dig into the road, you won't be able to. There's a moratorium when they pave that street. So, so that new city streets don't get damaged, there's a five year basically no touch on the street. So, it's of the utmost importance that you reach out to DPW before they put that top code on. Otherwise, if you need to redo your water sewer lines or you need to do anything with the curb cut, you might not be able to. So, but we're, we're at a good point now where they, they're not doing the top code until the spring, so. Uh, but keep that in mind.
Let's bring up the.
I, I don't know if the council has to go somewhere if he wants to say something.
Oh, no, no, I just come. You kind of missed us, so it's kind of late now, I was down there.
I gave him your comments.
Yeah, good, thanks.
I covered, we covered Daniels and Clarendon. Alright, I'm still, we're still, we're still gonna take public comment in a minute. Um, keep before, cause I'm sure some of the neighbors are curious, um, although like Paul said, we're dealing with parking, um, what are you doing to the exterior of the building?
Um, we want to. Fix everything that's on the exterior.
New siding, new windows?
Yes.
Because it's under like the building commission, they have, it's gonna be more than.
Yes.
You wanna back up? Yeah, I will. So, yeah, we can, we can definitely show, what I was trying to say was if, if. If she agrees that we can get it all on there, we don't have to go too far into.
True, but then we can get two site plans approved.
This plan, that's true. That's, that's true. Are you, so even though we're not doing it, I, I, is, is, is the three family at three thirteen Clarendon being completely renovated as well?
It's not.
Is it occupied?
It is.
Okay. Um. So, the, the purpose of this plan obviously is to. Provide parking for three seventy six as well as to satisfy some parking issues that you're having at three thirteen?
Yes.
And you own three fifteen as well.
And because of that, it's like you, you need like. Three starting, uh, so you need six spaces there as well, which you. Currently don't have six on site, there's a four.
How many spaces you have today is what she's asking?
There is four in there and they have the, um. Oh, no, it's, I have four nights, English is not my.
I took a photo of that too, but that picture, um. So this, so this is the view from Clarendon looking. Down towards the rear, good trees in the background on the right inside of this building is that other, the proposed partner.
Yes. I'm just saying that going in the exterior, we will think that, um, we've started, but something happened with the guys, um, but we will complete that next year.
So, were you looking to? Uh. The initial person was to satisfy both.
It was to satisfy three seventy six.
Would you, would. Um, if you. And make six spaces that are forming onto the other lot, and you still move forward with this. Seeking this site plan.
For the three thirteen?
Three thirteen, so you could still do. What you're proposing.
Whichever, um. If I get approved three seven six or six parking space, you don't have to, um, jump three thirteen. Now, if it's needed, the space on three thirteen, so that we can work on three seventy six.
Yep.
Due to the three thirteen.
We just didn't know whether or not you would still move forward with this other location since if we make the necessary part of it, who's waiting?
Well, it's three, three seventy six, we can make that six year, um, period, so we should be good with three seventy six if it gets up to me.
That means at the moment. We'll send some public comics and see what's. And if anybody.
In looking at parking by, and I understand you're gonna try to do six, six. Three seventy six, which is great. Um, questions that we came up with, obviously it was the faith ministry reference.
Yeah.
Um, but the plan as it is existing is not showing any kind of snow storage. Nor is there any inclusion of construction of that parking.
Yeah, I know.
Where you wanna sewn out runoff shoes. Where property line comes from, very close to the back of forty two line street. Just to let it kind of run off directly there, forty three line street. I did, I did question within three spaces, including the three seventy six. I need for six, this area. The way this plot reads, we have actually eight spaces behind the house and we have the board. Not that they're necessarily worth it. The center is stacked. But those were, those were basically my questions, the other thing we talked about was the area of light bushes hedge. On property line, I knew aside the property, I thought we were going to say. Question really goes to the chain link and what should happen in this.
I had that question. Cause there's an existing chain link fence there.
Uh, not really chain link, it's more of a layer method.
I think if. I think if this plan was for, would most likely require some sort of decorative final fence separating the. The park here, because the last thing we want is light shining into nature and properties and things like that. Um, the stormwater question is, is very reasonable and quite honestly, uh, it would be required that they, that, that they showed, DPW. When, when they presented a plan, um, I think for anything, they require to see where the runoff's gonna go to make sure it's not going on to the neighborhood property, whatever else. So that would, you know, that would have to be part of it, doesn't, nothing shows in this plan. If you saw the last plan that we had up for one forty seven Daniel Street, they actually had. Um, drainage and recharge system in that parking area, the same would be, I think would be required here. Um, it would all, it would obviously have to be impervious to, it would have to be paved up, uh, because that's how you direct runoff into. Um.
My considerations of snow storage. Currently. Sometimes it's snow on three thirteen, it's pushed out to the live street. And pushed down the line street. And I remember my brother a lot pays attention to make sure that his driveway at forty two doesn't get snowed in. It is a tricky.
I think it would have to be that, that fourteen foot stretch. And, and, and the, the, the area along Clarendon, which is this, this top right area here. Uh, which is green space, so you, you think this would be snow storage, it would have to show on the plan, but you think this would be snow storage? And that would be snow storage, if we do, we do require that on parking plans, which would be something that we, we would have, but very much appreciate it.
I just, you know, one of those things, sometimes, sometimes looking at. You know, I think in general, my, my mother-in-law's back there and I think that she would agree. The time you get a building that, on the tax force. And so when I'm trying to, um, throw down. The decent.
We also wanna try to get cars off the street, and so we're gonna need for that too, so that's.
Very, very to comment, so.
Yes.
Thank you so much. My, my wife is back in one second.
My name's Susan Madville, uh, my parents live in the region on the street. Um, the driveway is that, is that three thirty seven Clarendon? The driveway, where they're able to come in, I'm assuming it's behind the house, I really don't know. But there is a grade difference between where the existing driveway is and where now. Backyard is when they're going to close. Parking lot, it drops down, so what's the grading going to be, is the existing parking lot going to be improved? As it is now with its carbonless. It rains, the dirt, the sand, the tar flows out in the driveway. My brother shovels it up and puts it back in. It, it's, the property at three thirty seven, about three thirteen, three thirteen, it's just. At best, so we have serious concerns about what the quality of that, of that. Is going to impact forty two the left street.
Okay.
My parents have lived there for fifty years and it's pretty much.
So. Good, everybody's here, just to talk about it, um. If, if they can do the parking on the other side, they won't need to be any improvements here. However, just wants to express like some of the concerns the neighbors are bringing up, like the, the condition of the property and the pavement. You may want to think about, um, firms or something like that line to actually, you know, mine are full of things and smoothly want to, onto the, uh, running property now. So I want you to just help them. So we don't know if I know.
To be helped, we can, we can do the, the entire parking lot.
Yeah.
Well, there's no problem with that, so we just wanna be able to. Go ahead and start the other one, we didn't sign a paper saying that we're gonna do the parking lot, if we're gonna do the siding on the three thirteen as well.
Cause that's, yeah, that definitely.
Being assigned, you know, one, two, and three, and then. Yes, pardon, uh, there's a lot of space in there.
Yeah, so when you're looking at that. Look, we'll get, the neighbors just bringing up some runoff concerns, so see if you can address. Address some of that and not just, you know, so keeping that in mind, so it's, you can bring it up, cause maybe it's.
Yeah, and then we see entrance and entrance from that parking. If they didn't put it in, you know, we wanted to have, you know, the Red Rose Speedway coming up between the houses, this is going to be the plenty of houses.
It's a small area. It's like they can only go in and out the one because they walk away.
I know, I mean, somebody would have to tell us what that plan is because it is a very compact area. I think there's. Five feet between, if I don't have feet between the back of my parents' house on property line. And I think on the side between the houses might be four feet. There's a, 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 a green strut. You're gonna have four feet of, yeah, that, that's what we have between two houses, so if you're adding six cars to that parking space. We have a road. We really have a road if they're in the.
That's where I come to start about a second. Final, like a six foot final.
And.
Anything else?
No.
Mum, are you anything else?
Yeah, thank you for your attention.
Keep, keep in mind also, that even though the plan may be approved, the six parking spaces, the three models there. It doesn't mean there will be six cars. There could be a partner with the old one now. Best case scenario, just to thank you.
Yeah.
You know, let's put this forward, when you're thinking about. Three thirteen and you're doing the driveway and other aspects, think about where you're putting your trash, just because we're, again, we are looking also, gonna be looking at three seventy six and wanna see which rashes on. Daniel Street. Located on the plan and with an enclosure. Around that, so we have the bins up, if the bins are gonna be kept outside, then it's gonna be hidden like a vinyl. Something like that, yeah, something that. Sounds good, so even though. You're not moving forward, if it turns out you don't move forward with, um, three thirteen, that's something you just might, that's still another feature.
Yeah, we're still doing that one.
Make sure you will have. Does it, cause right now it just seems like in front of the garages.
We're gonna hire a company to do the other side and they already give us a quote. To do that, the other side.
So. That being said. Back to three seventy six.
May I say something? So, my name's Justin Brennan, I live on three thirty two Clarendon Street. Um, I have a property, a three family there next to the funeral home. My brother owns the property across the street. And my parents behind me on the property next door. I'm just concerned. You know, if there's the parking at three, three thirteen. I just, I just wanted to state that I don't approve of that.
Five hundred feet away.
Yeah. Just because. You know, there's, there's a lot of issues at that house already. You know, there, there's police there quite a bit. And, you know, I, I think we would just enhance all the problems that are there.
Okay.
And. You know, in my opinion. Neither of those properties are taken care of. We take a lot of pride in our properties, I just think that, you know. Been like that for a couple of years. Just have to state my opinion. I don't know, if you guys say something, something.
Yeah, my name's Michael Brennan, I own the house at three thirty four. And if you guys approve those six pockets bought for our house, I think that's the best thing, and she's gonna improve the house and the other house to make the neighborhood look better. Now we're getting a nice paved road, so we wanna keep it that way, we want a nice neighborhood. We want a quiet neighborhood and putting people parking down the street would not work at all, that's why I'm here.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
I'll say my voice too. Um, I'm Christine Brennan, moving the property at three thirty four.
Okay.
And. I just wanna reiterate what he said. That it is in what they said, it's a congested area there. And to add more congestion to it, take. The bleed space out in. I know you're making parking lots, but it's bringing more people into Clarendon in that way, and people walk to that, I really don't approve of. Walking up to the other house, I don't see how they can, because you got. Nobody shovels their sidewalks like they should. So they're gonna have the people walk it in the street. And it's not safe, they have to also cross the road to get to the property on the other side. So. If you can put it all on the other property. You know, there's not a problem with that, no, one site is good. But when you start bringing other properties down. It's, it's not a safe environment anymore. So.
And if she improves the neighborhood, that's the best thing.
Exactly, yeah.
We're happy with that.
You can see buildings painted and parking lots done over and parking off the street.
That's, gets all done, that's great, because those, those are, houses are isolates right now.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's only two thirds that are done, um, so. And I'm not trying to say anything bad towards you. It's been like that for a couple of years and.
What we're here for, we're trying to make.
More than a couple of years.
Think she improves it, she's gonna bring her value up in her house and that's all she's gonna do, and bring the neighborhood out.
Yeah, that's why they're here as we.
Wish you some luck getting all that done, that's all we can do.
Good, thank you for your thoughts.
That's all.
So. This will be continued. And whether or not you're gonna be ready for our January, February, maybe, because we can't approve the plans as they are. They're going to be doing.
The, the first plan that we had was kinda like that.
Yeah, we only have five.
We have one before than that, and somebody said, nobody gonna approve it because the stacking doesn't work. We went there, we measured it from the side to side, and you can fit six car in there.
Yes, but also keep in mind, you're gonna have to push it back three, three feet off the, uh, property line. Where it is here, yeah, push it out eighteen feet, eighteen feet, like, it needs to be three feet off like that. No, it has, need to be pushable, 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 same thing here, making sure two spaces, three feet.
If, if you, if you're engineer. I would say, you know, if you go to, if you go to Hannigan, read through this plan. And redraw it, because it has to be drawn by an engineer, and redraw it, and it fits, fine, if it doesn't. And we have to talk about three thirteen Clarendon. The things we discussed, um. You're, you're certainly gonna have to, we're gonna have to talk about how to screen from the post abutters, um, whether that be, like I said, vinyl fencing. Um, presumably it's gonna be pavement, it doesn't say anything on the plan, doesn't have anything on the plan about storm runoff runoff, that all has to go on that point. Snow storage, yep. Yep. So, you know, you have, you know, you have two options, two things at play, just make sure that you, whatever you come back with. Like I said, if you have an engineer that can stamp this, that can say those spaces fit on that plan, you can stack. Um, I, I, I don't know if the rest of the board wants to give input, but I, I know Paul and I have already said that. The, the, the stack parking for something like this, especially because it's. the, the, the stack parking for something like this, especially because it's three units and there's three stacks of parking, I, I think it's okay. Um.
Yeah, versus all like four D or something like that.
Or two sixty, which then you're blocking other tenants. That becomes problematic. But something like this is workable, as long as your engineer can say it works on the site and like Paula said, with three foot setbacks, the, the parking have to be the right sizes, um, which obviously is pretty straightforward. Then great. And if, and if not, make sure you make the necessary change to this plan. Cause I don't wanna risk you getting here in January and then having to go another month. So do you, do you think January is enough time to, to do engineering work to actually have a new plan for us?
Yeah.
Cause I can tell you, I can speak for some engineers, sometimes it takes a long time.
If you're not ready before that meeting, um, we said, I'm not beating the green or red. West to just continually say I'm not ready yet, please continue. That, that the agenda. Any other, any others are interested in that compared to public planning office and you also see it on our agenda. Or comments that, feedback. Yeah. So there's solutions here. It's just which is the best one, let's see. Going down the, the right room.
Um, so everyone knows we had to talk about January twenty eight.
Motions been made, they second, second. All those in favor say aye. All of the.
Aye.
Aye.
All aye.
Can I have it?
Yeah.
Can I only have that coffee though, that you can get me?
Oh, no, so just keep it in. I think I have it on email tool, but like, it's not good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. But thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, what else? Our next application is a special firm in site planning unit, um, and we've found a real request for very.
Sorry. I'm dead over here. Sorry.
Sorry. This is application for P U B and meet with firms, towns and street. In between.
Justin.
Yeah.
Was this Justin Leclercy was on the email for it?
Yes, yes.
That's surprising.
Well, it is surprising.
No, I don't. I think they're out there for something else. I don't know. Move on to the next one, come back. That was not gonna happen today. Well, I'm just saying, we're gonna give them, we're gonna go to the next one and then we'll come back to it to make sure someone's not, you know, running late. Um. The engineer was in contact with us at some point during the last week, so I'm kinda surprised. So I would expect someone to be here, but. You didn't see Justin or anyone from McCarty, right?
Moving on. Four thirty two John.
Close.
You.
Yeah, exactly. Alright. Um, well, uh, do you want the um, the color, um, the, the one, the one I had up early, the color change, uh, rendering, um. Site plan and then the new renderings.
Then my, my head sent it, uh, I have Chantel just reached out earlier, just to make, to make sure that the site plan contain the modifications from the twenty four, so that we're approving the site plan for what they.
So we didn't have a chairman as, um. Mike. In one language, yes. I don't know if you've had a chance to see the memo we put together. I think I've got a little Chantel. We got a little. Relation was, uh, so a memo we put together.
Yes.
Right. So that should cover the issue with stormwater management, because all of it, for the most part, has shifted.
We don't, you don't dispute that. We're saying that the site plan has to reflect whatever the changes are. That's all. We approve the site plan, so.
Mike, Mike should be on, I believe, I believe the site plan does have all of these.
Wanna make sure on the site plan, otherwise.
Mike, Mike's raising his hand. Go ahead, Mike.
How we doing? Uh, Michael Malinowski with Allen Major Associates. Um, the drainage modifications, um, and modifications that are on the current plans reflect what has been completed or removed and put into the notice of intent, uh, jurisdiction.
Be whatever the, the conservation has approved, be used in with stormwater.
Correct.
Okay. It's, it's just, that's very typical of, of having to modify a, a site plan to reflect things, don't want it. So.
Yeah.
We just, so we have to, it has to be reflected on the site plan from the changes that happened.
Correct.
You just need to make sure they don't.
Exactly, yeah. We want to prove a site plan that now is different with somebody else. So this is why we have a number, we are doing a number of proceedings in some cases where an applicant is still with another department to try to. Well, but they have to go back. Yeah, minimize the number of plans that come back from modifications.
I mean, I think, I think we covered that other plans, kind of small scale, we leave. The, the, for the prior plan, it's driven a retaliation base and now it's basically things.
Great. Just wanted to check on that so that we can. Bless it.
Yes.
So, so there's that piece and I'll. Let you do that. And so we took that feedback from the last meeting and.
We had feedback from last meeting, revise, um, the plans. Um, schematic is showing here, it's a little bit off, because I didn't show the actual script footage. It was kind of a work in progress. So we created, um, four thousand square feet of retail space. So for the most part, except for the two spaces directly in front of the Cube Smart self-storage that exists. Um, we hope we've accomplished what the board was looking for, because now you have the most bad detail work. So you've got the tailor, harbor freight, the brewery, you have the, the, uh, recruiting center, we've got four thousand dollars, four thousand square feet of new, I'm gonna call it new retail space. And then what we had from the prior plan, which is approximately another eighty five hundred square feet of retail space.
And just to be clear, because I wanna make sure we're not conflicting. I know you generalized it to four thousand square feet, but I see four thousand one one five. So I'm gonna go with what's on the plan.
You're gonna go with what's on the plan and what's on the rendering. Again, this is a little bit of a work in progress, so they were trying to figure out the actual square footage. I wanted you to show us for the. Right. Wanted you to do a little bit of a comparison of both.
So I have two different plans now.
That's right. No, no, no. Well, that's, that, this is just, this is just a rendering, right? So, um. Bear with me one second. What, what we just wanted to show here is what basically is existing. Again, left to right, dry cleaner, uh, dry cleaners, harbor freight, the brewery, brewery recruiting station, the new four thousand square feet. We go to the next one. Yep.
And so I have.
So four thousand one, four one one five, I believe is what the size is. The sprinkler room in the front right there. Um, and then the rear is, Mike, you can jump on, what's, I mean, I think you said similar was thirty thousand square feet, is that right? So the rear is like twenty six thousand, twenty, yeah, twenty six four.
Twenty six.
You want to see one of those, that's one online, it says, it says four thousand square feet and it says twenty six four and that.
Alright, so it's four thousand retail, twenty six four, so.
Just seem very exact, so that's why I was just kind of like.
Okay, this is, this is just, there's like a, you know, this, this rendering is kind of a work detail. The actual square footage is shown on the site plan.
Just wanna reflect that with that.
It says, it's the third one down, it says C one O two layout materials.
Right, but that must not be in.
Well, it is right there. See.
Oh, oh, you're looking, hold on. You're looking at something different than I am. Alright, hold on. Yeah, I got it.
This.
Yes, right. Okay. Yeah, see, it says four thousand there, but I assume, obviously, the design I had up a second ago is the accurate final figure, though.
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah.
I mean, quite honestly, quite honestly, Jeff, I, I appreciate that. I think it does solve what we're going for. Um, I, I, you know, I, in, in in the interest of, um.
Is there anybody on your team that just wanna verify about what the, clarify that it's four one one five?
Mike?
Yes.
Is, is it, is it four one one five? Is that including that area for the sprinkler room?
I think that four one one five includes that sprinkler room, so if you take that out, I think that blue, the yellow piece is about four thousand square feet. It's that one sixteen.
Um, we also received, um, yesterday, um, a letter from Community Development and Planning. Um, and I'm just gonna read it, uh, into the record. It's, it's December sixteen. Um, your planning board chair Karen, I'm writing this letter regarding the application for true storage LLC. For modifications to the existing special permit at three, at four thirty two John Fitch Highway. I understand the applicant seeks to convert the existing theater space into additional storage units. Now, the cinema theater is closed. That it is extremely, that it is extremely unlikely that another theater or retail would occupy that very large space and that converting that space into additional storage is what may make the most sense for their business model. I would like to reiterate, in this commercial retail district, the city believes this development should maintain smaller retail units at the front of the building. The applicant committed to in order to maintain a retail appearance and presence. Converting all of the vacant retail space to more storage at the front of the building would isolate the existing, existing occupied retail businesses. Harbor Freight, North Village Cleaners, Mill City Pub and Laundry World, however, with the owner's recent investments to improve drainage issues. It cuts off there. I think that's a, the city appreciates the work the owners have completed to improve the physical appearance of the building and parking lot. As well as improving the drainage on site, this coupled with physical improvements to John Fitch Highway. Sidewalks and drainage scheduled to begin in twenty twenty eight will make this plaza a very attractive place for business looking for retail space. Uh, their letter is, uh, very much in keeping with, I think, what the board was conveying last month.
And are you? Question about dumpster.
Of this, of this project?
Yes. I was just there today and there's another dumpster there up here. Uh.
I didn't have a chance to drive by today, so I was like, okay, just.
That's on the side of the building, on the right hand side, so it's not on the dumpster pad, it's just sitting in the. You'd be there, kind of random.
On the north. Hey Josh, is the, um, local facility guy on tonight or is he not on tonight?
So it's located to the north on the right.
I gotta unmute Josh first.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Josh. Josh, did you hear the question, Josh?
Yes, I did. Hi, everyone. Josh Sullivan of True Storage. I can check with the team. It may be something temporary. Um, I am not familiar with it, but if it is, um, something that shouldn't be there, we'll, we'll have it removed right away.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a large green dumpster, because we see the nice dumpster enclosure. You did put there on the pad.
It's on the right hand side, close to the roof, like on the window bank side?
Yes. Yeah, not this, uh, not on big limit.
I bet you it's for tiny, it's right behind the.
Kind of distance though from it.
Oh, you can see the trees right there.
I know, but it's quite a distance from it, so it's not exactly.
There is one, there is one, is this, Josh, maybe correct me, if you can see my cursor. Is this supposed to be a dumpster on this, this rectangle here on the right hand side of the lot?
There was a previously existing dumpster there for, um, I believe the laundry tenant was using that, um, so I'm without seeing the picture, I'm not sure if that's the dumpster we're talking about or if it's another one, but if it's, you know, one that's temporary, I'll, I'll pass it along to the construction team and, and have it removed for sure.
Yeah, but you have a nice enclosure there.
Josh, if I could, I, she showed me and I, I didn't have a chance to drive by today. They're showing me one that's in a white fenced enclosure. I'm, I'm not familiar with the other green dumpster, but I mean, if it doesn't.
The other green dumpster is north of that, on the, on the right side.
It's north of the one that's fenced in on the right hand side. I mean, if it doesn't belong there, then you just have to. Yep. I know you don't have this, we're showing under reverse. I just, I hear, yeah, I had, I had to say it.
Up to again, talk to your facilities people, but now you have a red dumpster that is actually blocking the lane on the right hand side, like just drop there, like, why is that dropped there?
It could be that, I believe Josh, the one, the right. There's a new dumpster there, right on the left hand side. I mean, it looks like the temporary.
It's like not even close, it's just like they dropped in that.
I think I can think of is the, the, either they clean, there was a clean out or some construction debris.
If we could get copies of the pictures, that would definitely help and I'll pass along to our construction team, um, but you know, any violation or dumpster that shouldn't be there, we'll, we'll have it removed immediately, no problem.
I've been, it's kind of in the travel aisle, going to the right, taking point by the building on the left hand side, so the right, right hand.
Okay, under, understood. And, and yes, we, we definitely don't want any obstruction in any, in any drive aisles or circulation routes, so we'll, we'll get that taken care of, no problem.
So, no, I don't mean you need them now. I'm just saying so you can give them to your client, cause I don't have Josh's email address.
So I just wanted to, things are looking good. So I just wanted to, um, see that whether or not there was any other changes to. And then go with the square footage that was gone, not on this plan, but it's more precise on the other plan. This is kind of like general. If I am correct, if I'm wrong, okay, on that. With overall, so the square footage is one fifty twenty nine seventy four, I think. The building. With partly is an empty community narrative, eighteen thousand, two thousand three hundred storage presently. Looking to seeking twenty six four hundred.
Yep.
Thousand four hundred four. We've got thirteen six ninety six twenty. Commercial. So, fifty three is twenty six thousand hundred, that brings it. Trying to count that out. I appreciate that all the frontage and. Efforts have been made to keep that more short. Storm Friday.
Again, we, we met with, I mean, Josh's, uh, retail leasing team, I think it's always trying to gain information about low tenants. If somebody comes along, you know, of course, gonna obtain it because they try to be self-stored, but they also build the spots and. And it's, I mean, it's less important now, but because I had talked to, I, so I talked to three of the counselors, I talked to Councilman Asa. Council Fleming and Councilwoman about this, um, and them all had, you know, similar suggestions as to what the board was pushing and what community development just suggested. So I, I, I appreciate that it came back this way, so we don't have to go too far into that conversation. But, but I think this solves that.
Any board members have any? And, oh, anyone with one thousand?
Yeah, I'm very pleased with that, Jeff. I think the modifications to the plan really worked well. It satisfies not only the city, the board wants, but it gives you a lot more square footage. It's lower, it's a little bit more.
What else we were looking for was, and we talked about it the last meeting, was the modifications to the permit themselves about removing.
So. And so I, I think I want to come out. Um, did you get the seminar chairman, Mike, Mike gets very good at doing this stuff.
Saw that, yes, I have.
Looks like eleven would be, uh, stricken, three would be modified based on the square footage we just talked about, looks like twenty one would come out. And you already, basically completed all the phases, so twenty one would come out with two reasons, most of the Senate jurisdiction, I found out now. And you're basically, I think, a year and a half, Josh, ahead of the basin.
We're gonna just modify that, so those criteria, just to, you need, you're just like in conformance with stormwater and conservation.
That's fine, you're talking about twenty one?
Yeah, that section under storm water, nineteen twenty two. Water, that means, that's maintenance review, that's standard, so nineteen's pretty standard. I think, why, why nineteen?
I guess the only question I would have on nineteen is, um, since it's already been submitted through. Concom, um, and the DPW, do we need to sort of resubmit it again?
No.
Okay.
I was glad that you've just meant the requirement, that means it would just be green.
Gotcha, okay.
You complied, if you complied with that, and it's just making sure it's recorded and it's, that we satisfied with it.
Now, the, the question, I, I, I'm not certain with, with the removal of. The detention basin, um, you must still have to have an O N M plan for the. Underwater drainage, the, uh, underground drainage that you have, correct?
Correct, and that's included in, uh, what was submitted to Concom under the NOI. Um, as part of that package, we had to submit it, uh, the stormwater operations and maintenance manual, it covers. Street sweeping, litter pickup, um, eh, the existing infrastructure, the catch basins, the lines that are in the road. In the street, in the parking lot, so it covers all of that, um, as well as sort of general housekeeping for the site.
I don't know, um, I, I don't wanna put anyone from Concom on the spot, but I don't know. If Concom usually does this, but I know DPW usually suggests and requires that all O N M plans get reported in the registry of needs.
It, it's, we, it's the same requirement with, uh, conservation as well.
Good, Josh, you shook her head, she's, she's, we have a Concom member in the room, so, um, but, but yes, as long as it's registered, as long as it's, you've done it. And it's recorded, then that satisfies the condition.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Who is, it's done, we just speak, it's. For that, and we'll modify twenty and twenty one. Preliminary set stormwater. And then also, we'd be looking to approve the site. Which requires. The additional storage and. Modified by the. Hearing, so is there anybody up there? In, in this room, or out there in our virtual world, who'd like to comment on this? There any other?
Is mine?
Does any board member have any? Comments?
The only other comment I have is, and, and I, I know Jeff knows this, just make sure, because we have an issue with this. Uh, visual issue with this, that this special market is. Because they are quite often not, so I just mentioned it as a FYI. I emailed those two, by the way, if you don't get them tomorrow, we'll be able to.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, we, we took care of that. Just to know if you needed more trash. Storage, then in which case you could. Modify the plan. Okay, alright. So.
Maybe motion to close the public hearing.
Motion's been made to close the hearing, all those in favor. When seconded, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed, they oppose, both, all vote. Amanda?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Paul? Tracy?
Hi.
Aye.
Ayes.
Aye.
And Paula.
Yeah. Uh, it's cutting out a little bit, the mic, Paula.
Okay. And discussion.
No, I think, I, 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 I was concerned we were gonna get to today and, and not see a change, so I was happy with the change, and I'm, I'm good with it.
So, as we previously discussed about approving the site plan with the modifications to the, um. Storage process section, as well as the, um, stormwater. Improvements that are made are reflected on the site plan. No additional dumpsters, and we will reflect the square footage based upon the breakdown of this provider. In regards to that.
I need to plug the modifications to the.
Put the little modifications to some of the permit conditions.
I'll put that in.
A motion's been made to accept Tracy. All those in favor, both follow, all those equally aye, all those equally say opposed. Amanda?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Alin?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paula, aye.
Thank you, Josh, Mike, and Jeff, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks, I'm happy all of it. I'd like to say I am shocked I looked that way, but I appreciate it. I'll, I do what I can, yeah, good job.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
So smoothly, when you just say yes. Is, um, Townsend Street out there?
I just, I'm texting Justin now, he forgot to send me the mail, asking for the convenience.
Okay, so, you sure the answer apparently is?
No. Sorry, I.
No, it's not yours, it's. Uh, twenty eight next month?
You know, wait, this thing, wait, for this one.
I'm speaking, I'm like. I think he should be able to speak if he wants to.
I think that's why I'm back to that for a moment. Oh, man, I'm gonna take some public comment, because we're gonna, it's, we opened the hearing at our last meeting, and if you want something to say about this project.
Have questions. Well, okay, so you can't really. So, so why, so before, before we do that, why don't I pull up the plan, we'll just, very, we're not gonna go over it in depth, but. Just so people that are here know what we're talking about.
Been great about coming both meetings, so let's see what we can at least, um, pull up the.
Yeah, and, and it's not a bad idea to at least get your comments, so that we can, you know, the applicants can be made aware of that. Alright, so, up on the screen. Design. Those who are aware, this is zero Townsend Street, uh, plan unit development of eight units. Uh, this is about probably five hundred to a thousand feet before Cortland. It's near, it's near Cortland and MacIntosh, I'm trying to give people a frame of reference for where we are, but yep. Alright. Your questions, if you have them, we all have questions too. Well, when it is Ron going six twenty Townsend Street. Ron, where are you in relation to this?
I think this spur, right there.
The fourth had gone right, that big spur there?
Yeah, that's me, that's all my property was all the way up to the, the back line to the next property.
What number did you say?
Six two zero.
Alright, so you're, you're the highlighted parcel, let's try and get it here, and this is the, the site, uh, like.
I have, the what you have, Prince and Jarvis, and I have no footage of setbacks, so what's happening here? It's got that fourth building jammed all the way to by property line. A, can be moved to inside interiorized to the left. And B, he's got plenty of things, affidities, all the way up to the point, my immediate neighbor, and nothing protecting my view. Is last part in my whole view of that back property. Uh, I. That's my two concerns, I bought this piece for the privacy, but now it's changing. Yeah, I don't want the storage. Coming down, the property, I'm up to the woods, he's taken out, back to both points.
Good.
And then, so the, this, this line, you see, um. The line that goes all the way around the part of the property, if you look, I'm, if you look at, see the black, see where the arborvities are right here?
Yeah.
There's a line that runs all the way through them this way.
Right there, yep.
That line is a, should be a fifty football per, per year, year. So, so it should be the same here, to here, I, I, I don't know, I, I'm just assuming that's your property line. But I believe this is supposed to be a fifty foot buffing, that spur that goes up, that's me, all the way to the, the back property. I, although. That's, it's only setback, oh, maybe that's just the setback in the zone, if that's the case, the side setbacks. Yeah, that's the case, the side setbacks fifteen, it does say minimum side yard provided sixteen point five. Um, what's, what's the, don't we have a PUD buffer requirement?
Clear, helps the whole, whole side of the property.
I, I'm trying to work it out, they're not here, so I'm working out with you, it's, it's a good question, because the setbacks certainly will come into play. Um, and you know, how far off it is and how close they can get to, to neighboring properties.
To have open space. Usable open space.
I mean, I think off the bat, if, if, if. If anything were to happen, the two issues I have are the two buildings on each side. Um. You know, it's also, you know, we have to have a conversation, I know Paul and I had a conversation about, um, you know, having. You know, townhouse duplex style buildings in.
Well.
Uh, uh, residential, but detached single family houses, so.
Bringing that up, this is a multifamily development, just in RA. This is, these are not single family homes, this is even duplexes, they're not detached. To me, not, when reading the zoning ordinance, we do not make. Per se, and that, blending in with this neighborhood is RA, and it's a single family development.
Oh, yeah.
We saw down the street, we have, uh, Epi Street, it's all subdivisions and. Not sure, there was nothing nearby that looks like this multifamily at all, uh, that, that would be. Why it would, why it would blend in, nor, I'll just say, this is for the applicant to bring back to, why it was enough to deviate from. The current zoning, why is it special, you want it to be mixed use to, to, to be. Also, looked at, um. Then it was a rear lot that was approved, so they could do a single family home there.
That's, by right, they can do one house.
By right, they can do one house.
Yes.
It's not, I would say it's developed.
Well, I might.
And there's other, there's other, it's like, three, at least three lots, four, three. Four lots were actually sold off that property, along the frontage along Townsend Street in the past.
Yes, that's, I think I own the original house, sold all that property, plus.
I, well, to me, the two others are all property, they left this, it was spur then, I found out. It goes back.
Yeah, it's a, it was approved as a rear law, it's a rear law, so it's a single law.
So it's a bill, a single bill, so right now, in RA, you can do a single from there.
They, 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 they also might be able to, um, meet zoning requirements in our code by putting a load in and putting. Several individual homes, um, is, is. Right, that's what I'm saying, there's a provision in our ordinance that allows them, by right, to put single family detached homes. If they meet all the zoning provisions of our ordinance, but. That's, that, that's complicated, and we don't need to go there now, because they haven't provided that.
That would be a definitive.
Right.
That's, again, it's just like Epi Street, be creating lots, good to create frontage, you're creating lots. That's big enough, or, or is that, can you be done with all of the weapons and other ones?
Well, that's, that's whole lot, so.
A whole other thing, but, but for us this evening is about whether or not it's suitable for me, and I'll just say right off the bat. I don't, I don't see it.
Well.
As a comment that will be made when the, when the applicant is here as well, but since we're right up here, I can find.
That's, that's all I have, that's my questions. So, see, you're, we, yeah, we, we, we will get answers to your questions, and, and you'll be able to ask them. When the applicant's here too, so that we can, uh, okay, it's, it's always easier when we can have the back and forth when everyone's here, and then they can revise plans. If so, if, if needed, or, you know, we go from, we go from there. Great, thank you.
The January twenty eighth be the next, your next meeting?
That, we, the next scheduled planning board meeting.
I, 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 I can read from what they wrote, and I read last month, they're still waiting for, uh, Concom, I believe.
Yeah, that's what the.
Um, so.
Probably would remove them though to come, because I'll hear some of this feedback, if we're communicating, if they change this. Others working with Concom, put a plan that.
I was trying to tell Mr. Cody that there, that there's a chance, if they still choose. They could request of us not to come in January if they still haven't solved Concom issues. I don't know that they're gonna do that, I just don't want you to come in January, maybe, that someone's definitely gonna be there, because we can't make anyone.
No, you can't make, is there any way I can find out?
Yeah, call, call the week, call the week of, I can't tell.
I have a card.
Okay. Yes, please, if you would, thank you, that, that way I can call.
Yeah, I, absolutely, e- even that Monday, it's probably the twenty seventh, or whatever it is, all, all that, that, very good. Thank you, yeah, we're done.
This is, so, anybody else?
Make most continuous for January, do you mean?
That was Amanda's second. All those in favor say aye, all those who say opposed, both follow, Amanda?
Hi.
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Tracy?
Aye.
Alin?
Aye.
Alex?
Thank you.
Aye.
Have special format, site plan maybe modification for Mad River Holdings LLC. Zero Asher Ham Street, modification of site plans should include relocation, a reconveniency equipment path, and a conditional light pole. Of needed, zero ash, and Steven the moral residential district, this is for the solar project.
Yes, hi, good evening, my name is Laura Asia, I am, uh, the project manager for the solar project during construction. As of September of this year, and I, um, in, in the narrative that I provided. Uh, the updated narrative, um, that was provided, there's essentially four changes, um, that, um. Have occurred during construction, um, that have been approved by Conservation Commission, so I'm thinking. Uh, with the planning department today for those, but, well, not but, but in addition. To that, I was also in conversation with, you know, the residential block, that, um. You know, kind of crap is over, they can conservation, and, and, um, planning, um, just to kind of. Understand and align our next steps for that plan.
Already made changes to what you're proposing, or you want to make? Already made changes to what you're proposing, or you want to make?
Um, the, as it currently stands, it's more a concept than a plan. So I think, you know, we just kind of want to align on, um, you know, I, I can present exactly. Yes, exactly, um, so we, we can start there, I think that's a great, a great place to start, so. Um, in, in speaking with Conservation Commission, um, you know, when I was trying to carry out this plan. Um, you know, I, I had questions because they are, you know, a lot of the planting areas, which is yellow. Of the yellow highlighted, um, areas, um, you know, I think there's, there's a lot of easterly and a lot of westerly. Um, to, to those areas, they, you know, um, they are in wetlands, you would have to cross over wetlands, you actually plant these trees. Um, and, you know, and, and currently, um, these wetlands have grown back quite a bit, so essentially. We found that we would be clearing wetlands to plant trees, uh, which sounds, sounded a little counterintuitive to us, so. Uh, we took it to Conservation, um, and, um, you know, first I, I didn't update. Uh, with the Conservation about a month ago, they requested us to buy, or, um, you know, um, it was suggested. The, or, uh, the, the commission assigned Frank McPartline from Gillis and Noy to walk the site with. With me to, um, come up with findings, I, I provide findings to you guys as well. Um, essentially, in the plan, um, this, I should mention, this is a plan from twenty twenty two. Um, so it is rather dated, um, Billups and I found issue with the tree species in addition to his last finding, which is essentially. It's, um, you know, exactly kind of what I said, that it's highly, a highly congested area, um, that would require wetlands. And that we tried to come up with a new plan. And so that was brought to Concom, um, I guess, uh, a week or two ago. Um, and it was great, um, what Concom found, and I put that in my narrative too. Is that, um, the commission is requesting that the original buffer planting plan by E R M be null voided. And that a new plan with new locations and details submitted. Um, and so that's what we're currently working on, um, and it was, um. And beyond that, this, uh, last week, um, I, um, hosted the Conservation Commission for a sidewalk. To, for everyone to see the current visual impact of this project. Um, and, um, and, and basically try to understand where is a good place, uh, to put. To put these, so currently, um, the, the next steps would be, we're coming, um, that we found with Concom was. That we would create two plans with Matt, Matt Bobbacy from Doler, who's our current, um, civil engineer record. Um, you know, it's most the visual impact is to the southern portion off of Ashburnum. Um, I think, uh, especially, uh, the Capone residence, um. Right, I know, right here, um, we, our, our aim is to really densely. Um, put native trees in, in this area right here, um.
So, so that swath that's in the middle there, thi- this swath right here. Basically isn't a problematic one, other than I assume when you get further down here, so you can, you can still. I, I think the, the board's main concern, I, I mean, we'll probably defer to Concom a lot of it, but the, the board's main concern is. Keeping that vegetated buffer between the property owners and there. Um, if, if, like, for instance, and, I, no. What Concom decides you can't do in a wetland is fine, I, I wouldn't have any problem with that. If there's other plantings you can do, um, you know, I don't know how it looks now, but I know when I did the sidewalk. Probably a year or two ago, um, it was, it was clear cut. Um, to, and, and particularly behind this area where Stickney Road is, uh, Kelly Residence, ninety Stickney. Or ninety one, um, whatever the number is, I, I, I mean, that, that was like wasteland. So if that's still that way, and it's not wetlands, if you can plant back there too, instead of the areas that you can't do. Then I think that solves similar purpose, you know, buffering the residents.
Yeah, and, and I will say, there has been, I, I've received feedback and just visually, again, I, I wasn't on this project prior to. The September, but there is growth, so I mean, it's definitely worth looking at. Um, and, uh, happy to facilitate any meetings, so that, you know, um, site visits or anything.
Date mind, but when this would, like, to be submitted by, like, if we modify, modify this plan.
Yeah.
Which if we nullify the original plan, because it's made in the.
Yeah.
That when you renew plan.
Yeah, we are engaging, um, you know, uh, Mr. Bobby Seafoller immediately, and so the hope could be that, um. If not, uh, I mean, again, in terms of cadence, it's to be deter, I mean, I, I think I would probably go to. And Concom first, have them blow that, and then present it to you, so if I am able to do that in January, January, the hope would be. February, I'd be able to, uh, presented the planning, um, works, you know, and, and the hope. Yeah, the hope to do spring planting, obviously.
Is, so to that point, what Paul was just saying, is, is there anything that we have to do? Now with the four changes, or can we just do it all in February?
Um, well, and we would love to get those approved, because we are holding off our construction just to get, um, those. Whatever, um, changes, and I'm happy to run through, like I said, they were approved by Concom during the last meeting. Um.
I didn't have a problem with it necessarily, but the reason why I asked that question was if it didn't matter to you, do it all at once, but.
Right, all that, but yeah, um. Yeah, so I mean, uh, just in terms of this planner, does that sound good for you guys?
Otherwise, it's like, we sting it again, want to make sure.
Right. Right, yeah, so we would present this to you again, once Conservation, I, I, right, like.
Treat it as another modification, unfortunately, it requires two modifications.
I like trying to say for that.
I know what you're saying.
It's like, they're not sure, it's like, well, like, you know, that's kind of a large, big, that's important component of the site.
Oh, my suggestion could be.
I don't want to say submit it.
So my suggestion could be, um, Paul, if you, if you want to try and make. Your life a little bit easier, we, we approve it condition upon an acceptable, uh, landscape plan to be advertised. And if we don't find it acceptable, and we can't take public comment, it can all be part of the, the same modification. We just require it to be advertised and discuss it, and if we, and if we don't like it, then it's, it's fine, if you want to draft some permits, that's fine too. Trying to save you some work. Up to you.
It shouldn't be once, spot by, it's not that.
Okay, alright.
So, yeah, it's just like, it's, it's looking at this, it's what substantive. It's not like, if you approve saying this is what we're doing, I'm proving it now, and we just want to revise the plan to reflect. What we're doing, that we, and that's one thing about submitting a follow up with a plan, but if you're not sure what we're doing, then we can't.
Right, exactly, but I, I just want to clarify and make sure everyone knows, like, the, um, the revised plans will be more. You know, we're gonna take, you know, um, a very, very dense approach to this southerly portion, essentially. Um, you know, um, based on Concom's feedback on the site visit, visual impact on the westerly and eastern side was negligible.
Okay.
Okay, so it would be more, uh, the plans that we will submit to Concom are on the side.
So, on the westerly portion, I think one of the butters is here. Um, the other, there's one other butter there, correct, on your side, on the other side? So that's, it's spoke, um, was there any correspondence in Concom with her about?
Yes, goes.
No, I, okay, I, I, I didn't even mean to put Joyce on spot, I was, my point was, if we're taking everything away from that side. Joyce could speak for herself, but I didn't know if the other butter had, had influence, so. But anyway, we can get.
I was not informed of any feedback from the other butter during the con, I mean, did we, did send notices?
Yeah, neither have I, Paul, I think no one, there's been no additional comment.
Alright.
This is a hit, Joyce, would you like to speak?
Sure, can I, uh, join the discussion if I may? Thank you. Um, Ben, Jim, first of all, I would like to order record, I don't want to be, I'm lying out either. Um, that I am a member of the Conservation Commission, but I am here tonight speaking. Um, personally, as an abutter to this project, and not representing Concom. Uh, as an association with that board or representing the Conservation Commission in any way. Um, I, Warren's presentation is right, the situation on the site. We all know we've worked on this project for a long, long time, and I was very much a part of getting this residential buffer. Um, put in place because of the forest cutting that took place. A lot has changed on the site now, and the other thing that has changed that is impacting this. Is the weather that we have in twenty twenty three facilitated that their plans increased the size of detention basins. Swales, um, runoff burns and that, that has pushed the solar panels back further. And increased the, uh, they came into where the residential planting was going to take place. But the priority, and where what I'm hearing from all of the other butters, is water. They want, it's not been the residential buffer anymore, we want to stop the water from coming off the hill. So that has sort of changed where everyone is with this plan. To, um, kind of, and I did bring this, I have a copy, that, um, Lauren, I don't know if you saw this either, but. Um, chair, there are a few copies of that there, that reflects the overlay of the wetlands that we're talking about. Not crossing to do any further planting, and they are substantial, we have the wetlands rediliniated. Um, there have been two wetlands restorations that have taken place there, so it is growing back. On my side of the, the property, it's on the westerly side, and as we talked about there.
Down here with that.
Eliminate that completely, because where they've moved the panels back.
You're down where the twelve is.
Right, right there, right where that is, that is, that's my property.
Yep.
I would have to stand on the tippy top of my roof to see anything at this point. So, there is no need for them to cross wetlands again, do a wetlands replication. To plant the wet, the residential block. What we're concerned about again is this little, the, the side below the entrance, as we write in there, yep. That is clear, and that is on a plane with the site, and that's what, um, Lauren is talking about, that they're gonna provide new plants. They're not gonna be able to put five hundred eighteen trees as we originally, the concept originally implied, but they will. Make a concerted effort to fill in as much as possible in that area, because those are the residents that is concerned. The side, um, part where Mr. Kelly is. That you can see how the wetlands, how many wetlands there are in that area, and again, they would have to cross that.
I should be saying that.
Spoke to Mr. Kelly, he's, he's not at issue with the res, with his new at this point. Again, that area now is in a conservation easement, so they now have approximately a hundred and sixty foot buffer. Um, and it, it varies, and the, the conservation easement goes down, but they're fine with that. So again, there will be some possibly planting at the bottom where that little dog leg is. There will be a potential plan, that's assuming that Concom lets them cross the wetlands to do that. That will be up to the commission to decide, but at this point, I'm here tonight to speak to. As someone who is a very strong voice of that residential buffer being restored. I think the plan that they will come up with going forward is what's necessary now based on the site. A lot of it is grading too, the way that they graded, it kind of sits down in, so now the houses can't see. So I'm, I'm fully in favor of, while we haven't seen a plan yet. What, the direction that they're heading in, I think is the proper direction that we should follow at this time. I don't know, anybody else have something to say?
Is all in the board for them?
I was just looking like the decision.
Yeah.
He knows trying, trying to.
Well, I'm sorry, say that again?
What, so decision from twenty twenty?
Yeah, right, but it's not in, but it's not in the meeting materials, right? But it's not in the, I see Concom letter, Navarre Solar Design Sheet, Sheet One, Landscape Plan, Narrative. Pizza, tax compliance, maybe in the application.
But what was in your order was based on the E R M plan of twenty twenty two, and that's the one that.
Right, well, what Paul was referring to is there was specific distances that were set in our.
Oh, yeah, hundred foot behind my property, hundred and twenty five foot behind everybody else.
And the last site plan they've submitted will revise to reflect that.
Yes.
So we do, the site plan should reflect that, so if there's changes to that, then, you know, when you're doing the plan. Changes, setbacks.
I don't think we're requesting any setback changes, it's just the fact that they're not gonna plant within those setbacks.
Actually, but one of the, one of the common conditions had to do with local plan.
Right.
So when the position number, you know, thirty six, we need to modify.
Right, right, so the most recent words convention, um, the earlier, I want to say earlier this year, the last condition on it. It didn't cite the plan specifically, but it said. They, you know, like, we will plant five journeys to three, it's reflective of the plan, so it wasn't a direct.
But I think you're confusing things, the order of conditions is Concom.
Oh, no, no.
No, this is planning.
Oh, okay.
Number seven.
Order of conditions, that's why I threw me off.
Seven states here, I can give that to you, seven state for the restoration plan from twenty twenty two with a five hundred and eighteen.
Yes, so that's, that's what I'm talking about, yeah, we're gonna seek modification of that.
Yeah, correct.
Yep, continue to adhere as to the twenty twenty two restoration plan, submit copy restoration plan, five hundred trees to Community Development Planning Office within thirty days. Date of this decision.
So that, I, I don't know how your orders go, but that probably would be removed and replaced with whatever the new plan is.
That's right.
We'll have to do, yeah, we'll have to do a new modification, new land, I mean, new decision, modification of the decision.
Plan dated, ex, you know, restoration plan updated.
At this time, there will actually be a landscape plan, rather than just the highlighted areas. I know Concom has asked them to say, what tree is going where in what location?
Yep.
Um.
For that.
So, so because, because we're not there yet, because that's gonna be February inch or my, my.
Four.
I was gonna say, my expectation is later, let's deal with, I want to pull up the actual request for today.
Yeah.
So, so these are the requested changes, changes, uh, one and four below. Um, where change is approved by the Conservation Commission. Um.
Page two really kind of spells it out a little bit better, yeah.
So relocating an equipment pad. Uh, adding a turnaround adjacent to the communication equipment pad, and adding one additional light camera pole. Um, next to the main equipment pad. How tall are those light poles?
Twenty feet.
Pretty tall.
Yeah, um, we, the nature of them are for, um.
Like, we need lights on them.
Why, because none of the other solars.
No, it's, it's mostly for the energy storage to have cameras, like, I mean, you know, six of one, half dozen of the other, but. Um, we, we have light poles, currently, there's two on the approved plan, it would be increasing to three. Um, because we would want, um, you know, both, um, you know, the fixed cameras and a. Camera to point at battery storage for monitoring. Um, so that, that is.
So, really no lights, we're calling it a light pole.
It does have lights, it does have lights too, for maintenance and for, you know, um. Laundry and, and whatnot, that is, um, you know, a standard, we are trying.
Oh, right, those lights, I mean, they're not, they're not there now, so I, I'm like, I don't know why. And like, why it's necessary, you're not gonna be there at night doing maintenance.
Right, right, no, no, but it's emergency situations, that is. In, in a company level requirement that, I mean, we are trying to.
Well, I was thinking about that though, and I'm like, it doesn't, doesn't seem to be necessary for twenty fourteen, that's different from cameras, right? I'm not seeing that you need a twenty percent light on, even the dark nights.
Yeah, I know that, I mean, that is the directive, um, you know, so, um.
We have nine facilities now, and I don't have planes that I go on.
Agreed, agreed.
I don't, I don't want to start here either.
The approved plan already has two light poles.
Well, I'm not calling it a light pole, alright, I'm saying it's not that they can't have a light pole, cameras, it's having a lights.
So the light, uh, we.
Not developed yet, so we're not there.
Yeah, now, our question is on the light, and so.
Show me if I'm pulling it, I'm pulling it out now, where they are.
Yeah, absolutely, um, all of the main equipment, so northernly, all the way up. Um, yeah, and so the third one, um, let's see, there's one to the northwest corner of that main equipment pad. And then there's one midway on the eastern side.
So there's one here.
Yep, correct.
Alright.
And then there's one go, uh, midway on the eastern side, so halfway, yep, but, yep, on the equipment. Um, yeah, or sorry, on the equipment pad, the other one would go across the street, because again, um, the. Um, the the directive is to uh have the camera pointing directly. At that, those two best units, those two energy storage units for monitoring.
If um, i- i- is that is that visible to any of the others?
It would be from the Capone and, yeah. Yeah.
So.
Particularly, Capone is the, well, it's not Capone anymore, they sold it, but. The new owner that's in that house, that is, that that's the house that sits up on the high driveway. So that is high level at their elevation. Any others tip a lot?
Out of curiosity, just in terms of lighting and and whatnot, I mean, if it's. Switch operated as necessary.
You mean like motion detection?
Oh, I mean, that's one option or a switch. Right, okay, I know, I suspected it could be, I mean, it's.
Motion might be worse, yeah.
Motion might be worse, but like, I'm just saying, like, if it's.
But also, why does it have to be, why does the lighting have to be that high? If you're could, you want to look at the period, you can have lighting this lower. Need to be twenty feet.
No, I mean, I think it's.
But any lighting should be. Lower and probably should be on a switch so that you could. Because it's like it should.
We'd be open to that.
I mean, I think this is this is clearly something that we would have taken issue with had. It's 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 so it's so hard with the detail, especially in in solar plans. Because there's so much, there's so much detail on these plans that something like that. Where you expect like you see an electrical connection, you know this electrical there. Or or pack lights, like lights on the side of a building that are down facing, which are perfectly fine. Uh, we're talking about twenty foot light poles. I think that's something that would have tripped a conversation.
It just says light pole, so I'm thinking.
Yeah.
You're just putting in like.
It's on the detail sheet too, but I I don't remember. I I I don't know.
Expect it to look at everything on the detail sheets, you know, we're looking at every. And it's hard.
Exactly, yeah, I I I'm there too, so.
When it but but when it brings to our attention, or you mentioned that, it's like, okay, that's that's, you know, twenty.
So would there be a height that you feel comfortable with?
Six foot.
With a managed switch.
What is it? What is the switch to? Well, it just stays on all the time. What is this? Oh, oh, when they go on, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, 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 oh, yeah. Yes, yes, uh, I my concern would be that it would be on all the time, but yes, that would.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
It would be there.
That's why you just, that's why, you know, I just assumed that.
Yeah. Right, right. Okay, so the best, I mean, the best unit does go, I mean, it's like a. I don't know, eight or nine feet or something. I mean, um, yeah, so.
There will be an ass needed light, so you have a switch on it. It doesn't really matter how how far I'm really going.
I have less concern, I have less concern if it's not all. Right, right. They, someone, a maintenance guy goes up there once, he's like, I'm just gonna leave it on.
Because until someone wants to say something about, oh, they don't even know, they butters know they could say something.
I my suggest, my suggestion would be, and and I I see how the poor feels, my suggestion would be. That they either be down facing wall mounted lighting or poles not to exceed ten feet. That that would be my suggestion.
And and note on the poles, on the pole height, the pole height is, um, you know, the cameras. They can turn to get the top for the thermal imagery.
Looking for the whole solar field, that's what.
No, no, it's really the tops of the. Of the best.
What's the concern?
A ther, you know, just, yeah, thermal runaway, like, you know, um, or anything like that. Not that there's any, like, you know, it's. You know, essentially, they operate, our our company operates our energy assets as if they. You know, are are substitutions eventually. And because they are energy generating assets. So I I realize it's a um more of a conservative approach on. On, you know, our security, but the thing is, we have very large utilities, our projects as well, and we need to run lean on our. Ops, uh, like on our operations. So every project we have has the same C D cabinet, has the same monitoring. And and that's kind of what I'm presenting essentially.
Can't be like the twelve fifteen feet.
Well, Paul, what if, what if, what if we just say that they can be twenty foot poles, the lights can exist in ten feet from there?
Right.
Keep the lights lower so that they're less intrusive and and on and on switch not to be maintained. You know, not to be on twenty four seven, twenty four seven. Yep.
So is that not?
So, yeah, switch lights not to be always on. Use as needed, um, the poles can retain what they are in the schematic, which I think is twenty feet. And but the lights need to be no higher than ten feet. Because that way they can put the cameras at the top and then they can have lighting when someone goes to see them. I mean, they're gonna be down facing anyway. I'm sure you're not gonna, you know, they're not. Usually say lights. Which I'm sure they, almost everything, especially if your scale is kind of.
Yeah, um, oh, yeah, you're bringing up, um, do you give C five point, actually, um.
You want that, you want that?
Yeah, I think, is this C five point two? Um, I can just kind of tell you that.
Fifty things on my screen, so when you guys see is not what I say, I gotta move all this stuff. Uh, this is C five point two.
Perfect, yeah, that's that's probably the best. It's a more zoomed from zoomed in. Of the uh main equipment pad as well as where the SCADA pad is moving, so, um. So, yeah, so essentially, we are talking about the light pole, um, you know, the main equipment pad, so this, our SCADA, um.
Hold on, I'm gonna zoom in.
So our our SCADA pad was at the main equipment pad. Yeah, um, nor to the big one. Yeah, so so our SCADA pad was at the big pad. We wanted to take it. Parts it out and put it a little bit closer to the point of interconnection. Um, in order for us to tap our SCADA on the line side of the rebother, so then. You know, because it it kind of connects our cameras, it connects um everything. So basically, if the site ever was down for any reason, we would still have connectivity to our SCADA. And access to our cameras essentially. And because of the distances, there's power and. Um, you know, uh, power and communications requirements, so we're just kind of bringing it in. It it is a smaller pad, um, I want to say it's a five by eight plus minus. Um, and so you can see wherever we located, um, is, um. You know, uh, just southerly, there's a flooded area, yeah, and it's after the turn. No one from the street is gonna see it, um.
Is it, is that, is that akin to like a transfer, like a transfer box? How 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 big is it?
Yeah, it's, um, let me think, it, I want to say it's about three by. Three by four.
Okay, so it's so it's about like what you have for a for a housing subdivision where you have the electrical interconnects.
Yeah, but we are also going to have, um, our fire alarm control panel there as well. And our internet, uh, you know, uh, box, you know, enclosure. Um, and then adjacent to it, we wanted to put a turnaround there, um, as well for evening service, uh. Uh, you know, uh, servicing, um, as well, um. That's again, more of a safety feature.
But nothing on that pad is of significant height.
No, 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 no.
That's all.
Um, is that, that's within the fence line actually, so you're not leaving.
Fence lines, the this line, the next line.
So we're saying within the fence line. Um.
Okay.
Yeah, and so, yeah, those are, those are the restatably the changes, um. And, um, one parking space, sorry. Oh, sorry, it's it's not intended really for a parking space so much as a turnaround, um, for trucks to turn around and and whatnot. Um, you know, uh, again, if the site was ever down, we'd be able to operate this sometime from a safe distance, that's. Um, there was just one last change, that doesn't have anything to do with C D. It's more when, as we were constructing our detention basin. Um, at the tenth basin one, um, which is the one on the side of Joyce's house. Are like in the westerly side of the project. Um, while we were, um, constructing at the lounge, um, the groundwater service level was a little bit higher than what was in the D O P. So we did work with Concon to feel the, um, to feel the dust up. We had to be, um, the basin, um, volume the same. And we did our calps. So, um, it actually improved our hydrology. And because of that, um, like the the overall geysir water impacts from any of the other three. Um, you know, changes that I just made, um, actually, um, it from the hydrology standpoint, it's only pretty. And that's, that's it.
Okay.
Clarify, you mentioned about operating at a safe distance.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely. So, right, if there was ever an event or anything like that where we couldn't operate, you know, sometimes. There was ever a murder or something like that, that, you know, went on fire or something like that, we'd be able to shut everything down. Um, from like a very far state of distance away.
Yeah, she's on a roll.
Are there any further public comment?
Um, chair, if we might, this. I I'm sorry, I I don't know your name. She has uh the vacant lot that is two down from the Capone's. And I know, um, she's questions when there's public hearings going on, that since her lot is vacant. That. The applicant can put things on her lot or drive on her lot. And we just need to reinforce that that is not. Uh, you know, just so that you know, they, and then you can call if you would, just to let her know that people can't do anything with her lot. She just uploads the project.
That would be the best.
Yeah, but. My English nobody works, so sorry. My my daughter told me because I received that letter. And I said, what? The company put everything in my land, you know, there nothing to that, all it did.
Are you saying that right now there's there's things on your property that the company is putting on your property?
No, if the letter say, he.
That's okay.
The company needed. Put something over there, it can. That, that's a.
Notice for the hearing.
For this here.
So so. It's Jacob who's saying, and she's completely right, nothing we do today means that they can do anything to your property. It's only, it's only what's what's on the property that they own is is the only areas that they can work in. We cannot allow them to do things on your property.
Yeah, I said, I think so that, but when I visited the letter, I say, what is the company put there? Truck and everything material or everything over there?
No, no.
Wired by law to any changes, anything they're doing to notify a butters within three hundred. So letting you know just what's going on.
They're just telling you they're coming today so that we can, we can fix some of the issues on their property. And it has nothing to do with your property.
But if you have any comment on what they're doing. We can take that feedback. But if they're making changes to the plan. Not on your property, but we're trying to, you have to, by law, inform everybody.
Okay.
Maybe you have something to say that they could.
If you have your daughter talk, call me after and I can explain it when she, when she comes.
Yes, I, my son is just more about English and I understand that. More, but. My English a little bit, but do you come and give me that?
We we also, if you want to come to city hall, we have folks that can translate for you too, if it seems to be.
Okay.
Feel free to come to city hall and we can, we can arrange something for them.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Is there anybody else who got it?
No answer is.
Motion's made. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed, roll call, vote Amanda.
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
All aye. So now discussion.
Yeah, so so I think, so I think the right way to do it is we do a modification with the four points that were mentioned. Um, we leave number five off entirely and we'll just address that. How do you meet the problem? Come back with a plan that Concon is satisfied with. And we'll take a look at it, we can hopefully discuss at that point.
Okay, that's okay.
So, um, I would make a motion to approve. The uh special permanent site plan modification for. Uh pursuant to the um conditions, uh, the requested modifications on the. Letter something.
But also.
And to and to add, right, to to permit condition number three. Uh, excuse me, to their request for modification number three to add that. Um, that while the pole I can can retain at the designed heights, that the lighting on the pole not to be higher than ten feet. And it not to be operated, um, continuously twenty four hours a day. And that it been switched, uh, to be used when people.
And that's for all light poles.
Yes, there's only three, but yes.
Anybody else?
Need a second.
Second, motion's made with the second from Tracy. Roll call vote, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say opposed, Amanda.
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Paula, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks. On the record, one of the ones, it's gonna be considered wasn't necessary. We, uh, engineering had a comment about directing the wastewater. I don't think, I don't, it's, there's no, there's no sewer connection. Right, there's there's no sewer connections on the site, right? Excuse me, there's no sewer connection on the site, right? U W had a comment about a sewer, sewer connection permanent.
Oh, yes.
I I didn't read it because I assumed as much.
Right. Thank you, guys. We have before us this evening a special permit and site plan review for Santos Rodriguez. Proves to convert a mixed use building with professional offices on the first floor. One residential building on the second floors. To a two family dwelling with completed with sixty one Fox Street in the downtown.
Right, board, thank you.
Residential, you can confirm we have how many buildings?
It's four. Well, yeah, it's. There's a residence at the top, but it's always been a two bedroom method on the second floor, although it does have a third floor attic space. So the second floor unit is a two bedroom movement. With that, with attic space. So, this, um, although it's. Large, right, because.
So this sketch is, e- explain what we're looking at. This, this is, it's this floor one, floor two. And I'm trying to figure out exactly what to make of this.
Oh, let me see if I can flip it in my head. Looking for the entry.
This might be for a different property, I don't know.
I don't know, it's not.
Okay, I was just confused.
Oh, okay, all right, so. Well, that's not right.
Nothing commercial space you're looking.
That's, that's why I was curious. I was, I was looking at this and you, you just mentioned the two bedrooms and the attic. I'm trying to figure out. What we're looking at.
Oh, you know what? That is four two, that's the, that's.
So this is the second floor in the attic? Okay, so this is floor, okay, so this is the the second floor in the attic and. She probably uses what the, this the this living room or something as a second bedroom, or this is the second bedroom on the attic?
No, there's a. That, can you help?
There's a bathroom in the attic, if that's.
Yeah, there is. I can barely see it, so.
Yeah, no, no, it's, it's very small from, from a distance, I'm sure I can zoom in a little bit. This was just, it was attached to our, to our file here, so I'm just trying to figure out what, what we're looking at.
She sent me.
Yeah, I don't know why that doesn't.
That's why we're, we're confused, we, we want to know what you're, because we're looking at parking.
Oh, okay, all right, that is, that is the second floor, that's the first floor of the second floor.
Yeah.
Yep. And that is the, that is essentially the third floor.
Since the attic.
It's the attic.
Perfect, that's what I thought.
Um, but that bathroom there is non-operational.
Okay, that's fine. So, the, so I thought you were gonna go there, this is the second floor in the attic and then the first floor as stands today is, was commercial space.
It was commercial space, correct.
And, and still is kind of like, uh, it's, it's not set up as a, as a unit.
It's a unit, we pulled it from it and also the.
Still another first floor, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I was just talking about.
People going over that, we, I was like.
No, no, that, let's, let's, let me close this, because that window's confusing.
So, what you have now looks like one bedroom.
Or two, one, one on the second floor, one on the third floor.
The sketch must be long, because it's two bedrooms upstairs and, and an attic space, but it's not finished.
Unfinished with the bathroom.
Okay.
No.
It's not operated.
And on the first floor, what is it set up as now?
First floor is set up as a two-bedroom unit, which we have.
Perfect, so two, two-bedroom units, perfect, that's all I need to know, two, two-bedroom units.
Two, two, that's what we want to get.
Yes.
So that's, I want me to have space as well, I was gonna say, there's two, wait a minute. Typically underneath like three units, you provide three onsite spaces, correct?
There's currently, if you look at the picture, uh, in the front, you can fit two vehicles in the front of the house, that is the box inside. Uh, there is an Adam Street side. I'm gonna, I have a phone, maybe it's just that's the night. Probably they're going from both sides.
Now, your current tenant, in your documentation, they send there by fifteen.
On your office, yeah.
One car?
Hold on, I want to go on. One second. She's been there, she's, she's probably been there almost twenty now, uh, before the building changed ownership, she was a resident. So she predates her own.
Do you have a spot there as well?
This, this is the other one there. That's where she parks.
So you have a reason, so parking in your other side, unfortunately, was parking on the other side.
Yeah.
This space is parked.
Yep.
So this is what she's parked, so you have three onsite spaces.
All right, this is, this is today's picture of that left hand block.
Okay.
I ha, I, I, I had, you had it on the bottom of the sketch here, twenty feet wide, sixteen feet.
Yep, which doesn't, I believe, meet the current, um, requirements, that's right. What does it?
Uh, so eighteen, I.
Well, you know, was twelve feet, I do, when you have two cars and it's allowed to, they're allowed with the two family to back out, so um, the spaces are eight feet, width about sixteen feet plus. So.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
The width is good.
So you'd have to get a curb cut permit to pull off the rest of the, the granted.
Already have, yeah, we'll sign off, uh, uh.
And they, they usually want that back.
They were.
The granted curving is.
Okay, well, he did, he did, uh, give us a permit, uh, did pull out application and, uh, I spoke to um, I can't remember his name, Ryan Foin Brown. At, um.
So I put this up and then I saw that, yes, you could potentially create more offsite parking or any other corner, and I don't think that's a good solution at all, and it's also not allowed being on the driveway that close to an intersection, that comes. But then, and I'm gonna put this to the point to think about this. Yes, it's a two-family, two, two-bedroom, so typically it's two spaces per, but if it was a multi-family, we'd be looking at one. Next, and three.
I think, and I, and I, and I appreciate the fact that you went out of your way to, to.
Look at.
I appreciate the fact that you went out of your way to, to, to try and, um, get other spaces, um, on another site. Um, however, I don't, I agree with Paula, I don't, that's necessarily, that, that's necessarily, I think that three spaces are adequate. Um, we rarely say this, however, um, in this particular instance where like Paula said, if we looked at a multi-family building, uh, what Paul's on the definition of multi-family, but it's a, two, two-bedroom units is three spaces. Um, while for a two-family, technically it's two spaces per unit, um, I think it's in harmony with that area to have three spaces there. Uh, we also have in very close proximity to this, um, the Elm Street parking, parking lot, which at some point in the future will actually be usable.
It's over the eight hundred feet, you know.
In addition, their city is looking to doing like in downtown, like in this dis- district, uh, parking permit, or like on street parking. College area to be.
So we could do something, something similar to that, right, twenty bucks a month or something, get you out of the.
And I was gonna say, as a side note, drove past there on.
So that being necessary, if you feel, if that's, you have that program, it feels necessary to have the, a, a, another space, we can also, we can say, you know, we can actually just put that in, too, just say that we chain up on three.
I mean, it's a heck of a lot cheaper than the lease you had.
Well, that's, and it matter about like, so that's about like the bedroom situation, like where you have like the bedroom, but the unfinished space like that, you have, if you don't have that that, it looks like it's a great thing to put in, not in store property, we don't want to see that corner dug up. Either to stop.
That corner should stay landscaped.
There, that should stay nice and landscaped in that corner. And it's not, and I mean, you're allowed to like, you know, was a commercial use there? The, um, commercial doesn't even need parking.
Right, right.
Hey, so it's example on some of that, you, you're trying to do, at least, it's like, it's only two bedrooms. Be managed with the, uh, the three vehicles here and there is on-street parking and there's parking permit.
Eh, what I started to say was, I've been past there twice, I went Friday and then again today, uh, now in Friday and yesterday, and there were, I mean, I counted eight spaces within a hundred and fifty feet of the tour of that property on the street, um, uh, obviously you go all over, one over, and there's some parking issues, and you go the other way, people park for the courthouse issues, but right there on Fox Street, they really.
Of course, always they.
Yeah.
Yeah, I walk up that way, I work on Main Street and lots of. Optometrics building that was brought up on Fox Street.
Yeah.
That is, that's, I thought it was.
So.
Yes, I went to him when I was younger, I was like, I thought that was.
Like it's on the core, I thought it was.
It is a core.
Yes, nice bit. I was parked on the street.
Yeah.
To go there, nope. Nice looking building.
It's great, it's a great looking. I'm, I'm okay with the, you have the three parking spaces as is.
They still care for it, maybe.
Well, I probably wouldn't think like that if this was a disaster, yeah, but it's obviously very well kept property, it's a great looking property. There's no lack of on-street parking if you need it. I just, we'll see the building left answers the way it is. There's some nice landscaping, it's beautiful, fun to watch. All the day.
For what it's worth, I mean, I know that, um, at least that you had, your mom seemed crazy high, the one that you provided, I don't know if it's.
Uh, well, that was, uh, in all fairness, it was eight dollars or six dollars a day at the local parking.
There you go.
So.
What I'm, what I'm saying is, I don't think you need to spend that money to do that, that was the point in that conversation.
Um, yeah, yeah, yep.
Uh, you want to take public comment?
Yeah, I'll take the public comment, if you, this is sixty-one Fox Street. Is there anybody who doesn't like to speak out? And is there anyone? Now, can nobody stand up?
Yeah. And then just, I think that, want to make sure that there's no, um.
We are just trying to keep all the parking on site.
So this one, this one says, please apply for a wastewater permit to allow insured usage. It may separate roof meters and floor drain from sanitary sewer and its anticipation for sewer separation. Any excavation required on public play must be called by a city bond contractor. Um, I don't know if any of that applies to you, but that's just a, that's the.
It's nothing that prevents you from working on your curb cut, separate, you're not having driveway, you're not creating a driveway.
So, there's still a curb cut, I know.
Want to stop your driving over the curb.
And don't try to keep that piece of granite.
No, so in, 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 uh, whatever the requirements are, just follow the requirements.
Yeah, you're working within the right of way, ask to be a city bond contractor.
Yeah. I'll make most of the public hearing.
So there, any performance, any unquestioned question, it comes from that, again, it's, it's, uh, reduce, reduction on, yeah. Motion's been made to close the hearing. Wait a second, thank you, it's a close to hearing, all those who say aye, all those opposed say aye, Amanda.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Aye.
Alex.
Aye.
Aye. Discussion.
I have, no, I make a motion to, uh, with her and say plan for what's that?
Also two new bedrooms.
Okay, two, uh, sixty-one Fox Street, um, so you want that as permit condition?
Well, it is, they're trying to convert.
The permit condition be that they, that they, that they retain two, two-bedroom units.
Will not retain, like no maximum, not exceed.
Maintain the property as maximum two, two-bedroom units. And curb cut, they put both out there on, um, Fox Street. That they, they do want to know the way, uh, three spaces.
Okay, yes, and, and also the, the length, but the, the sixteen. Oh, the length, okay.
The, the one from from the end of the building to the edge of the sidewalk, it's, is, uh, sixteen feet, and it's five foot sidewalk.
I would just, I would just make a note in the comment that the, um, that the, the space is presented, uh, the one space on Adams and two spaces on Fox are sufficient.
Absolutely, we're going to have three spaces, maintain. Those spaces.
Right, right.
I mean, this is a special permit, we always have to be right to, if you find that there's an issue, recall the special permit and have permit conditions, that's the beauty of this service.
Say if another additional spaces needed, then it's a secret onsite.
Make that all part of my motion.
Motion's are made with seconds. From Tracy. All the, roll call vote, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed, Amanda. Peter.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
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 Thanks, guys.
Thank you, everybody, happy holidays, see you soon.
Our name is three, propose to build three green places, six acres, two thousand thirty-two acres, development. Consisting of two. If you know together as one lot. No, one over there, there's only one issue.
See, that's what you want in? Yeah, to go on the start with. Well, we can develop. My name is Anthony Kleats from Haley Ward, design engineers with the pocket. Here with the guy to my right, Fred, Fred and trees, and I can, and Dave, a lot of, uh, problem. For this original, who's away. So I just see where we have, um, Smith Street to the top of the page, to the, to the west, unimproved way Dale Street is to the, to the bottom. The top, you have two existing two families that are off of Smith Street. What we're proposing is to utilize the access, utilize Smith Street to access the property behind those. Putting in a, uh, driveway, going around the existing two-family to the left of the page there, down around to the back and then having two, having three two-family units, looking off of that with parking in front of each of those. So no, no access is being proposed in the unimproved portion of Dale Street. Change anything there, there's some, some neighbors on Hancock, but many changes, bring it access there. For utilities planning on buying into the municipal water and sewer. The water is gonna be extended down Dale Street, um, off of, off of Hancock to service those three units, three buildings. Sewer is gonna go into Smith Street between the existing two bedrooms that are there now. Uh, stormwater to, um, meet the, the stormwater standards and Pittsburgh's Stormwater Bylaw. We're proposing an underground infiltration chamber system, that's the mess of rectangles you see, uh, underneath the pavement, um, in front of those first two buildings exactly. We did some soil testing, DPW was there as well, it's, uh, that's a good sandy soil there, which works out well for the underground infiltration system. Go on, see on the roof, hey, which, um, can, can diverge into that, we have a little bit of a swell on the back of those. Um, kind of diverting the water into that area to get that.
And we can use well, we'll get into the. With the existing buildings that, uh, to Smith Street, but also trying to win enough, they have them three foot side back from the street. Strictly, there's no sidewalk, everything looks like a.
Right, so see, we'll, we'll see, that's great comment, um, so, uh, the one, I'm glad we had comments, we took some measurements there. And the unit on the, the existing unit on the left. Um, as you've seen, the front of the pavement will say, where if you were to pull in, where the front of your car would be between the, the building and the edge of pavement. And there are some measures in there, to the front yard, uh, far from the byway, that's the front unit. So like an eighteen forty-three space, you know, they have two feet technically, um, on the edge of the pavement, probably to the right of um, there is, there is room, there's overhang in front of that, it's probably going to go the one to the right, maybe that's, you measure from uh, the edge of the pavement closest to the units. Um, going to East Smith Street right away, about eighteen feet, uh, so that would be the parking space itself there, there's no setup technically to the right of.
Could we look at a studio of that to see, is there like?
One of the GIS is updated on. Yeah. Near map is really good.
Yeah, yeah, so you go three more feet deeper.
So, yeah, so you can see it on many.
Cause I have stone in front of the building, so.
I'll put the near map first.
The street view shows a nice, it shows this crushed stone around the edge of that too, there are, could drive through.
You know, probably near map. Well, you can on this, I can log into my near map account and I might be able to get closer, but this, 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 the closer you get with near map, yeah.
It goes away if you.
Recent. Actually, let me pause, let me log into, I have a near map account, let me log into it. Actually, let me pause, let me log into it. I have a near map account, let me log into it.
That's just my initial thought.
But I can, you can see, yeah, you can see the crushed stone, I think they go around that. So I'll, this is the one that you measured right from this edge of pavement to the lack in the gray.
Yeah.
Condition in there. For that sideline. It's uh seventy four, seventy six.
How many spaces aren't there?
I was for, it's, it's like.
I can zoom further and when I.
Oversized floor. Enough spaces for six.
Yeah, I accept. Well, just like, what's she like, a three foot in space of pavement, so it's kind of like you said.
It's not, that was for the parking.
So I can, I can zoom way in when I log into my account.
Again. From, sorry, from there to there, this unit is, is eighteen week. This one is, is. So they, they have your three foot separation technically to that front line, but we need to leave what we want. But there is, there is no obstructions in front of the cars forward um. I think there's no walls or anything in front of that. You needed us to have that three foot separation there. We have to add. One foot strip of pavement. There and then another strip there. So it's um, that would be, I guess, something to discuss. Like ideally, we'd love not to add a.
But to some degree, there's an awful lot of pavement. It was like, how can you? That looks like.
Right, it's, it's parking. I mean, so it's.
I mean, the good thing about it is, it's a dead end.
Yes.
So and, 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 you know, I. As I've said before, it's a dead end that will never get improved because the power lines and the grade change is so severe at the end of this street. That I don't think it's ever gonna, and, and people aren't ever gonna drive down there other than people that live there.
So it's looking at the practicality. I was just gonna say for the record though. These were like two, two family homes, right? So you were allowed to back out to the street. Once you turn into a multi-family, you're not allowed to back out to the street, the same.
Right, but, but it's still, it's not a multi-family building though.
Hasn't that about the building, the project's multi-family? Now multi-family, you've added them all together. Right now, they're separate lots, they're two, two families. You wanted to put them all together now, what you're doing is part of the multi-family. So just saying. Yes, it's existing, but then it's kind of like, right, so there's that. Things pull out to the street. Your new ones will not be pulling out to the street.
It would have been, it would have been, and I know you guys think the same.
Whether or not, you know, it could have been, you know, down the middle lot to the side, but they were built just to.
Well, what I was gonna say is I talked to Ian and Dave when we started this, ideally, these buildings would have been. Done together where you could have had, had like a canvas style where you wouldn't, they would have been facing each other, where you had a center parking area that serviced all of them. That's, you know, that, that should have been the way this was done, and unfortunately it wasn't, so it's, we just gotta deal with. And, and, and if it's.
So I wanted to see the lay of the land because of the setback pieces to see if, is it practical to say, you know, for a foot or two to do that or. Literally draw a stripe down this, down the thing about go past this line, get your, get your car off the street.
I'm gonna absolutely straighten it.
Until you pull in or not.
Right, I mean, yeah, there's, there's, there's plenty of room. Um how far back can you go? Uh the date.
Uh so near map I can't, but Google, oh no, I take that back again. Hold on, let's see, August, April, October. July. And there's, there's the before the street moved, hold on. You zoom, every time I zoom in, it changes. What, what do you want me to get to?
No, no, but just like what the pre-existing can, the condition.
That's pre-existing.
Yeah, okay, yeah, alright. Yeah, man, you got, they basically rebuilt the road. Yeah, you know, they put a lot of.
I think this is the best one, if you wait one second. Yours, it, it screams behind what I'm doing. This one's, this one's the best one that says the, what it looked like during construction before you.
The, the blow off valves ended.
Here's a question, how far does Smith Street go?
You can see it on the plan, if you want to go back to the plan. It goes down right to Unitel's land. So it did all this adequate frontage and everything, but when I got the permits, Mark Barbidero said, okay, this is kind of. Weird, it's real frontage. You have to, and then the DPW said, you have to just finish the road and bring a fire hydrant to the end. I said, okay, so it was, I mean, it. Looked like a nightmare before, but then we came in, we graded it, we had bonded contractors in there. And we extended it, and then we just built it to plan. Everything was done in good faith. Then Dave and I thought. We went to the CBA, we could get lack of adequate frontage, which we, we got a legal rabbit hole. So, and that's why we came here. But yeah, if we were to do this perfectly, I would absolutely. Nope, no. So what we're proposing, you can see. Is um those spaces would be, we move those, so you're writing what you're seeing call out. So we're adding um spaces here, so moving that over and those two spaces will be relocated in that section there.
Is there anyone to add landscaping strip or something?
Well, and there wouldn't have enough room. I think it's in that, in that we. But I could do like planters or something or.
Yeah, well, it's touchscreen, I'm sorry. So you press, they can maximize the button on the top right.
Yep. There you go.
Blow it out.
I have my water shut offs there too, but I mean. It's existing pavement, we were just hatching it with. Um that's where the, the. The actual walkway is to the front porch, we're gonna wanna leave. Some of that, maybe we could get rid of a, a little bit of that.
I mean, that is cause like you're doing the walkway to the porch and now it's, now you're gonna grow in front of it.
Yeah, yeah, so you, you park here and then walk.
Then we're gonna shift that from you.
Well, then we'd be, then we wouldn't be on the public portion of Smith Street. And they don't own every side of that.
What's the width of the driveway?
Do you know the layout plan too, while it has more of a parking?
Yeah, so, so, so just a, a kind of thought exercise, cause we do this a lot. If you wanted to straighten that road out a little bit more. You, you own ha, if, if that's, if that's part of the. No, that's not part of the parcel. If this area right here is either. Oh, Unitel is that?
No, the city land stops. It looks like it's a paper or going all the way through, but it's actually Unitel's land.
What I was gonna say was if it was either private or unimproved, you could.
Where does the road stop?
It handle, it, it.
Right, right there.
I see this.
Right there, exactly. This crushed stone. Um which is used for kind of infiltrate some of the storm wars. That's the end, they see it right here. This is, this is the end. This is Unitel. And become office. We're basically coming in off of those two spaces and relocating those two spaces.
You almost feel like you go down the middle between two buildings.
I don't think you'll have, I, I don't think you'll have enough room. You won't have enough room for two.
Now you couldn't.
Eight foot parking and a twenty foot foot travel out.
And then you can't access the other public building.
No, she's saying.
No, no.
Move the parking for those two buildings.
No, no, not even the parking, it's the access road.
Oh, just make the access go straight through?
Yeah, you can't with the grain. Then you're gonna have. Ray or friends in there. The other thing too is, this is a, this is also, there's a, there's a right of way through here. Unitel has as well, so it's, it's, it's being used as access now. Would make sense to put that in there instead of getting rid of. Yeah, twenty feet off that fence, they were right away where they, they trimmed bushes and things like that to maintain their power lines. And so that, that'll end up being. Yeah, this is like uh. We thought the, the least amount of impurity service as well. Because that's, that area is never gonna be meditated. It's, it's a Unitel right access.
Well, I'd rather see him do this revised parking plan for that and then nearly see how this porch. Pieces connect. I know you have a hash mark over, but it's almost needs, you almost need to have like a curvature or something of a walkway and it goes over. Connect and not just be like, oh, you're walking straight to the driveway.
But you really, you really are. You walk off the porch, you, you, you literally look to your right, that's Bart's way. It was literally, there's like, you, you step off the porch and to the right, there's part of this car parking.
Well, you can create, it's like. It's like narrowed down, put some green in there, like deferential demarked. Demar, cause all, all it is is a free fall right in front of that, right there. And it's kind of like you need to demarc.
The one, the one thing I was gonna say.
I mean, that's initial, just from looking at this plan, let's look at, if we have a better.
I got stormwater O and M duplex plan.
Well, I'm talking about the, though, but safety of the people in the house where there seems to be a driveway going right up to the doorstep. And it's not. Aside from hash marks. So it's gonna be more than hash marks.
But I mean, so I'm not sure what your concern is. Four parking spaces here. And then this is what the existing pavement is. We can rip that off maybe greatly and.
You know, you know what I think, you know what I think the solution, you, you have a, you have a landscape strip that runs diagonal to that.
Yeah.
Yes, but then you keep the hatch all the way on the far, so then when you step out, you're not stepping into a park.
So have like stamped concrete or something.
She's doing the same time.
Yeah, to go over here.
Like five feet or so, like a patio.
You need to demarc this.
Yes, we're all saying the same thing. I think you, you have a, you have a.
Here and not this, this, this is all open so that people are driving in and then going right.
So you're saying demarcate more than.
Well, like, like Ian was just saying, you either do, maybe you do, you know, decorative stamped concrete or you do. I don't wanna say a rumble strip, cause that's not what we're talking about.
Yeah, what I do, we own here and some like armored lights and stamped concrete, I wanna.
I just said, we can't.
Yeah, and here, this, I think definitely. Yeah, we, we will maybe put some vegetation here or something.
Yeah, people just touch the screen. We've had people shut off this window before and no one here can get it back.
Yeah, right. I can, you can rip this off. Vegetation and we'll have like a little.
It'd be nice if, it'd be nice to, you know, if you had. You know, like you said, one or two trees or something, just so you're separating that, or, or maybe even a, you know, a, a, you know, a, a picket fence or something. Just separating the, the actual driveway from the parking area.
Yep.
Yeah, that one, that's what I was gonna bring up. That's the only thing I said, between the two parking areas, having that an actual nice mulched landscaped area. I think that's pretty easy to do. Now that we're, now that we're getting them so close to each other, just to, just to make it so that it's not grass, so people don't park up. Cause eventually. You have all the time in mulch, if you have grass, people park on it, it turns into dead grass. So you have a, you know, like a raised mulcher area.
Exactly, right, right.
Put a tree there, that would be. Something a little. Substantive. There.
Okay.
Kind of something of something, just to demarc a little bit, a little bit more, cause right now, just with this ocean of pavement, it just looks like.
Yeah, no, I can rip that off. Like landscape bylaw and such sorts.
Kind of thing. And I think, and that's, again, the, the access driveway is just trying to demarc it so it's safety.
Yeah, yeah.
Instead of, but as well as that.
It gets separated if there's greenery there too. You do have a hand raise whenever you want to keep public.
We'll get, we haven't got into the back part.
I just, just tell.
There's a hand rate and a, and as we're working on this portion of it, is it.
Uh Donna Boyd, Donna, you're welcome to speak. Just, just hit the microphone button.
Just, just say your. Name and address for the records, Donna, thanks.
Donna Boyd, yes. Donna, you just gotta hit the little microphone button to speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, did you get my, my name's Donna Boyd, my address is sixty three Smith Street. Um that, where they're planning on developing, that area is not all that big. Also, the amount of traffic that they're gonna put from Smith Street. That's a lot. I don't know if any of you folks have been out this way to see that. Um, my concern is all the traffic. Ninety nine percent of that traffic is gonna go up Smith Street and take a right onto Hancock, so. I live just about on the corner of Smith and Hancock. And lots of times the traffic gets um bunched up right there, right by my house. Um, there is, Smith Street goes straight through. To Clyde Street. And lots of times, and we've done it, we've gone through dripping our cars through. But then they told us we couldn't because they own that property. So I'm wondering why we can't, some of those cars can't go from Smith Street. To Clyde Street to ease up the traffic congestion here. Cause it will be ridiculous. It already is not. Not to mention. The crowding of the neighborhood when they do that. This neighborhood, um, when I bought this house almost thirty years ago. On my section of Smith Street down, there were three houses. Now. There's their four units down there, plus they're gonna put an additional. Six units. And the house that was built across the street. So this is a crowded neighborhood if they, if they're allowed to do that. And I hope. Um, that they don't put that many units in. In fact, when they changed the zoning laws. Um, I believe it was about eighteen years ago. They were only allowed to put in um a two family down there. So I don't know when that was changed to allow all of that. But that's a lot. So that's just. My hope is that they're not allowed to put that many there. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay, thank you.
And eventually Clyde Street, is that there?
Sure, right here. Uh, oh wait, my name is Carlos, forty one Clyde.
Forty one Clyde, alright.
The street that she's measured, Milton. And Milton Street. And cars are hurt before the, the two houses. That they weren't gonna be, not be using it that street. Or they are using it. Some reason I had two kids, my kids play that corner a lot. Uh, we wouldn't have many vehicles going back and forth. Now they are. That street goes all the way up. Only part they used to go is Unitel. Cause they're working the power lines there. And. Now, they're gonna use that street. Um, you usually put the snow cloud there. Now, if they're gonna open it. Where the, all the snow that they will fly. But yeah, but this approval doesn't have them going through. This, this point.
But I have a. Clyde Street, like is he officially.
Oh, this is no, there was the Clyde Streets way to. There was the ZB determined that there's not real frontage there. Coming on there, we're coming off.
Milton's right here, right.
I know, I talked to like Captain Gregan, you know, for like emergency purposes, they would use that. And Unitel would use it.
We could, we could.
So, even though you have frontage, you can have access to.
So, so, so we've talked about this, I think, at length with. Back now it's all attached, we're saying that we. And, and I think one of the things was. Because Smith Street is already improved and is more adequate, that that's the preferred access. I, I correct me if I'm wrong, Ian. But I think that was the gist of it. I think. You know, we had talked briefly about going through there. Um, you know, if it is of concern to the neighbors, we could replant a knockbox and, and, and a, and a gate. So that it can only be, you know, police, fire and emergency personnel.
Well, only, only. Just talk, talking aloud here, is there isn't existing three, three foot wide light of way.
Right.
So I don't know how that would impact other legal rights, cause it's. There is right to pass, we pass, that would be the only thing I can think of, just, just sit ball and you're talking.
Well, how do you prevent your tenants from going up and down?
Right, I mean, it would be, that would be part of the, sort of, education.
Don't make it permanent.
If it's, everybody else is driving up the.
I mean, it's not. It's not like, it's not like a road road, it's not. I mean, it's, you can go down it, but I would, I think, I don't know.
There's an access, like this back lot here, but. I think it was real.
Improved at all, is it paved?
Bring up the, uh, you can see it, if we can bring up the, uh, the most recent G I S.
Again, it's not banned yet.
I mean, we can, you can see where it's painted.
And it is overlay, so it's hard to see, but I think it probably stopped here-ish.
Something like that, yeah.
Recorder ways before, uh, I wonder, yeah, so say just, like compacted gravel or.
Yeah.
Yeah, we put gravel down there. Loom getting everywhere on the road.
And you, you until, you until uses that?
We don't.
When he worked on the. That's only because they used to drive, now it's like. I'm concerned my kids and it was kid.
Hold, hold on one second, someone's. Someone's not muted.
I don't know why I'm reading myself. Um, I didn't.
So this is, so this, this is a better. This is looking down towards the site along that. Um, that access way. Um, yeah, Milton Street, yeah, it's, it's an access, I mean, it's, it's a right-of-way access to follow it is. Um, and, and, and I think your concern is, you don't want them to use that, is that your concern? I think our.
Somebody up the gate and still have Unitil can have a. That's gonna be it.
I mean, I think our expectation, my expectation was, because the road is coming from Smith Street, that's the access. Um, you know, you, you want. I, I, I think that that, I think that that makes sense.
Otherwise, if it is passed and repassed, then I, I don't understand, like, why you can't use it in a.
I mean, I suppose it's a bigger question.
A bigger question, why can't you use an improvement? Because if you have the right to do that, then.
I know, talking to the fire department, they were looking at our turnarounds and stuff. Captain Gregon was like, okay, if there was an emergency, we could come off Smith Street, either turn, there's no turn around. Or they would come right through.
Um, I just have a question, who actually owns that access?
It looks like it's actually.
So it's, so it's not privately owned, is that correct?
Well, I think technically it would be.
The builder doesn't own that, is that correct? Okay, because we, we were using it and they told us we couldn't, and they even. The owner of, of one of those, of those houses. Is, is that person in that room right now?
Are you here? No, he's not.
Okay, so we were under the impression that he owned that. He doesn't. So my question is, if he doesn't, why can't we? To ease the congestion on Smith Street, just kind of like spread it out some. Some going to Clyde Street, some going to Smith Street. Because our houses are real close to the road here as well, and especially. The poor lady that lives right across. From, um, those, those two recent houses that were built, boy, they really. They tore down all the, she has no privacy left and her driveway is right there, right on the road like, so. I mean, this. This is really tearing up the neighborhood here, they, this. Especially with the traffic, I mean, this is ridiculous, that, that really needs to be considered.
Bring it up, cuz we're talking about it now.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I mean, I hope that we can, you know, divert. You know, traffic can, even if it went down Smith Street. And through and out to Clyde Street, or, you know what I mean, if they could go.
Yes, it's called Milton Street.
That's what it's called? Oh. I thought Smith, see, I didn't even know.
Yeah, oh, it's leaving, it's Milton Street going.
Oh, see, we were told that was a privately owned street, that's what the owners told us.
So the short answer is, it might be, it's in the city register, it's listed as a private or paper street. Milton Street from thirty-one Clyde Street to one thirty-six Smith Street. So the short answer is, it might be private, I don't know.
Okay, but if it's not, then maybe we could consider. Um, using that.
Well, I'm talking about we consider, we're, we're evaluating it now.
Okay, thank you so much.
We need more answers now.
Specifically Pittsburgh is required to access.
Yeah, we don't have to do that again.
So, but that's just so, um.
Putting the whole thing on, there's one part, so if you frontage it on, it's.
No, I take that, but what I'm saying is, but if you pass it, then you have to have your access to food and frontage to the property, so. We didn't have this driveway off of Smith Street. Those three units in the back, which would not have access to the frontage, if that's an issue.
And, and for the record, just to be clear, Smith Street is the only public way that we're talking about. Milton has question, it doesn't have a questionable access, they have, they probably have a right to pass and repass, but to, to improve it might be questionable.
Maybe, but maybe not.
So the question is, so the question is, would, okay, so the question is, would you prefer that? Because I wouldn't.
I think it's kind of odd, just seem to the.
The one public street that you have.
Same scenario, it's gonna be open, they're gonna be opening it up anyway to Milton Street, you cannot prevent people from not using.
But it's not gonna be improved, it's.
It doesn't, it's just one little section that won't be improved.
No, no, because this street doesn't line up with that street.
It doesn't matter, they're using it now, whether or not he's lining it up with it, everybody's going down, Unitil's already going down using it, so. I don't know, obviously, it's not gonna work that way. Whether it's off the street or not, they're going down that, or the, so you saw the view, they're going straight through.
Yeah, I mean.
There's not a gate.
And repass over, so.
They used to be a gate, they took it off.
Deal with the right to pass and repass through that driveway that you built.
I don't think they do. I don't think, I don't think they have the right to repass through on, on the land, no, absolutely not. As soon as they, as soon as they come off Milton Street, that's private property, that's trespassing, unless you're Unitil, you're twenty-foot off that, that's.
Well, does it stay specifically for Unitil?
That they've had, since the twenty-foot wide, they bought it off.
Well, there's just questions of clarification, sometimes when there's. But others are potential rights. Across some, on your privately, and sometimes it's. Rights to pass or repass.
Yeah, cuz what happened, they own it, then you can have it, but we have the right to pass through that, through these then. No, they're just twenty feet off that. Which is not that driveway.
So can I ask a question? You guys might not know the answer to this, but. You guys, I don't know, yeah, I'll be on Plaza. Why would Unitil ever need to go through that? They have an access road behind their zero lot, gets their substate. Cuz.
They go up there all the time.
Right, but they can get to it from, from the ninety-nine. Oh, sure.
Oh, there's a pole line through there.
Yeah, right along this line here, Paul. Right along this line, they do have telephone poles on my property. And there's a fence here. They have a little access here that they never use, but they needed to trim the vegetation here.
Okay.
The wires.
Okay.
So they have, that's why they have the.
So, I haven't asked you to reset the topic behind you that you're using. You say twenty-three?
It runs all the whole way, yeah, the whole length.
Milton Street.
Yeah, so Milton Street ends here, and then Gale Street begins here, as soon as you enter here, this is private property. Unitil has a twenty-foot off this property line, to access, to trim the vegetation, so. Keep trees and such away from the line. They also come in here and work in here quite a bit.
Okay.
Um, looking up in here, and then this is the. Little paper road, Gale Street here, this is private property. Unless you're Unitil.
Any other options?
You going, going to go up that side?
Um, yeah, A and Unitil could come in from Smith Street if they need to. Trim the vegetation, which they virtually never do, cuz basically, I trim all the vegetation. At this point, it's all cleaned, cleaned up.
No.
Yeah, I think we can, we can make it less. Accessible. With trucks.
Ninety feet edge of pavement to their property line.
Cuz on the other side of it, if we have this going through, people are gonna be sipping through. And it's gonna be like a loop-de-loop, and I, I know my tenants have kids too. That, like, we are, like, in vigilance of it.
Well, then why would be, give them access just from that side?
So get, get rid of, get rid of the Smith Street driveway altogether.
So you have one, so you, you have the fourth, the fourth, the two, two families maintain where.
Two separate entrances.
And you have the, is that what you said, right?
Right.
It's a possibility, I suppose. It, it kind of, it kind of, it kind of weighs both neighbors in that. The one neighbor that was concerned about the traffic on Smith Street only has to deal with what they have now, and, you know, it, it, it kind of spreads out the volume in the neighborhood, I.
Um, decreasing the improving surface as well. I don't particularly care.
We need to make sure, fire, we need to make sure that with, uh, Milton wide enough. There it is. Then I fire truck, so.
But so. I can make that. And so, Paul, just to go back to a little bit of our department, plan for you. So if I can just understand, we just came down a little bit. So. Essentially, stop the pavement.
It's even when you get close, it's really hot.
So, and the pavement. Right here, this whole driveway access up to Smith Street goes away. So these, these three buildings would be accessed from Milton Street. These two buildings would say, as is, access of Smith Street, this, this section of driveway. Really go away.
I think the funny thing about this suggestion, I think that was the first thing that, that you had talked about, when you, when we talked months and months ago about. I mean, just having a, or you and I talked about that, just having just a separate project altogether. Um, I, sometimes, but that, that, I thought we couldn't do that, that's not.
That's what they said at the ZVA, I, I'm not, I'm not.
You're saying if that project was. For your, for the project.
Yeah, I think that's why.
It would still be one large project. It should be like two phases of one large project.
Access, and this, not through your legal frontage, that.
Well, I say legal frontage, it's still, you still legal access.
She's saying that's okay, though.
Not, this is not, this is not legal.
I'm not saying it's legal front, right. When you say you have frontage, but it's still, still through a, a legal means of access. Not through the front, not through legal.
We would have done that, so.
Anyway, it's your property, it's your property.
Are you sure, Anthony? We can't, you can't go through there?
Yeah, this is just. Here's pass, with the state of Pittsburgh. We're always required to have access through our legal frontage, this is not a public road. Therefore, this is not the. We have rights to pass and repass, although that is a choice. This is not a legal lot by itself, because this is not a legal frontage. Which is how we got to this point.
I think what Paul is saying is, the, the, you, you, they, you still, we still theoretically would maintain it as one large law. As.
I don't disagree with that, what I'm saying is, no, no, I, but the access.
Anthony, I wanted to be off Smith Street. I just wanna make sure, I don't, try to protect our client.
No, but I, I think, I'm, I mean, I'm good at. I'm good with the, the only, but, he, he's a fireman, he knows, well, we have to have a little, the fire truck has to be able to turn around, so you need a little strip to turn around.
Yeah, right.
No, I get it.
Think you're a hundred percent.
Still gonna be able to have.
If the board has the ability, you're.
I like the idea of that hurdle, I just don't.
I, I just wanna make sure our client is protected from that, that sense. I don't disagree with what you're saying, I think.
Now, and it's, does, you know, till still need to, are they driving to the left of that?
It is there now. That, that view.
No, no, that is. Access.
We have the, uh, the street view.
On the way through.
Yeah, so they'll, I mean, they just kind of come right in here, right over to gravel.
Yeah.
Just. Through their trimmings right here.
Oh.
Doing here.
Okay, so then that, they're not driving all the way through.
They're not even gonna cut anything anymore, cuz I cut everything.
But they do have a whole.
But they'll be able to then drive through down to that. Go around the other way.
Yeah, they may even park a truck and have a guy with hedge trimmers just zip weed wax stuff down.
Okay. Just that, you know, where it's all, like where that driveway is off of Smith Street, you could make that.
Go away.
You know.
No, I can, I can, I can see it in moment.
Yeah, no, no, I gotta go away.
Cuz I think that, and I don't know if anybody. We have others, where you can have A and R laws, we talked about others where. Frontage is on a busy road, and there's a, goes a side street off the side, the frontage is off the, the busy road, but they're gonna access it off the. Side.
Scenario where he did that, where it wasn't a public street.
Right, but like a corner line.
But we, we made many commitments though to private, to in frontage.
I don't have, I don't have a problem with what you're saying, I'm just saying, I don't know. If we can, that's all I'm saying, I don't know. I don't know.
I think you can, because we've, they've done a lot where you have.
I'm, I'm looking in the audience right now.
But. We can improve. Kind of sadist in their brain.
Coming out of Milton, but.
Comes up all the time when we talk about cell towers and other things about access, and what, someone has the right to. Do you have a right to answer? As in a butter? So I think the question, not paper road, the credentials can't be. Is this a private?
Oh, definitely.
And then actually, you're the one.
No, I, I, I get what you're saying.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm still working Pittsburgh, yeah, I think we're gonna see.
But, but other communities, I said. I think it's just worth clarifying. I think, I think it's a great idea. I'm used to some programs, like, it's right about, it makes sense.
You think it should make sense?
I hate to do this, and then.
Explore.
All proven, so attorney says.
Not so much, it's like, you know, getting in the way of what seems like to make sense, like, I don't think, we're not disagreeing with, with the thought process.
So we have that way down to a certain spot, and it's like, okay, and it's, you know, why, what makes it private, you know, and that. Just a lack of improvement, it's private.
Public way is on, controlled by the city.
Right. Is it just a public way that's not improved?
No, it's not based prior.
Private way, oh, but.
I cannot tell you that, I don't think it is.
Yeah, then you.
No, it's not.
You can do that, we do have those.
Right, oh, yeah, yes, 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 but it's, it's, so, on the city street register, it says private or paper street, it doesn't differentiate between the two. It just says private or.
That's what the, that's, that's just the column, it doesn't determine what it is.
That's what I'm telling you, it doesn't differentiate, it says private streets and papers. It doesn't say what it is, doesn't say what any of them are. This is our, I can't tell you why we did the way we did, I remember.
I was just saying something about. This, this legal.
A road can be brought up. It's true.
Everything you were being told in a perfect way, but I wanna.
This is true, a road, as she was mentioning, a road can be brought up to a standard, so.
If you have the right to it.
Yes, and we, I think, I think it should be.
I think it's. I think you're right, a street, it is a paper, yeah. Depending on which statute you'd wanna claim legally, you could claim ownership possibly for the center line of the street unless. Um, the fee was accepted through the search of all the deeds and then maybe. Whoever owned the land years ago, it could be the heirs of John Smith that actually owned that land. But. Just because you're gonna own it, but that certainly you don't have the right.
I mean, certainly some. Fifty seven is using it.
Yeah, my buddy owns that, I actually was talking to him, and I, now that we're, we're talking about this, I actually think. Whatever reason, you have like a driveway that went back here to access this garage, it was kind of like a, a narrow street. Or driveway, this is Clyde Street here, and I think this was always not paved, for whatever reason, they didn't pave it.
Yeah, they did, they did a pretty good job, I mean, it's, it looks newer.
Oh, it is new, I, I don't. But he said it wasn't always like that.
Storm drain.
Then when you had the other one approved.
I have the other one, I have the other one somewhere.
Then I'll leave a little bit of more research. On that. But, um.
Well, I don't.
And does the board have an issue if the, if it can be improved, that the access. To this part of the project would come from that direction and eliminate.
The only thing, if they require me, though, if we're gonna improve it now. I gotta see where the sewer is in the water.
You can still get sewer line through the other. We're not changing the water and sewer.
BPW says since you're improving, let's say they will. Just looking at accidents. The only sewer would benefit you. Bring that up, so I think we can only leave the sewer as, as is. Just gonna change. How the it was get over three minutes. So that, that seems like the word says, senses that, that. Be okay, they can have the team that are working for that on our side.
I think that's a better option.
If it can be done, yeah.
Otherwise, I think it's probably problematic.
Well, I think, and now we're looking at likely, we've kind of thought of, you know, what were some things we could do to deter. You know, kind of going through there, like the gate, like you mentioned, breakaway gate, or they would do a, you know, you put in some. If we can do this.
He was saying we couldn't.
That doesn't happen, um, you know, it's a concern of the food traffic. Do that, so I think we're getting to get back back to such another. What do you do with, you know, or if it becomes something to deter cars? Like you into a truck, you know, you have like a wreath or something that. You know, you until could get in there and sort of free access, but if you're riding a car over there, it could. You risk damaging your vehicle. So those are things we could talk about, hopefully they will happen, um, that we could.
Could you talk about reducing the number of units? You know, we always wanna look at these projects, and so what's good for the city, what's good for the neighborhood. And, you know, I, I, I'm generally okay with it. But in the back of my mind, when I look at this presentation, the things that run through my mind. Is we have a lot of land here. Uh, how many possible units can we cram into it? We can maybe cram six. Is six, is six the best number? Probably not. It's probably not for the neighborhood either.
It is very consistent with some of. The, the buildings in the neighborhood.
Yeah, you know, you, you have six, you have six units on the lot. You're gonna rent that to six different families. You're gonna rent that to families probably with kids. Where, where are they gonna play? Where's the yards? Where's the open space? Where's the greenery? You know, it's, it's a, it's a great project if you wanna maximize space. But to me personally. It's not a great project, uh, for the city in that lot. I think that it could be, I think if you put four units on there. You'll buy it easily. Six units? Seems often cramped to me. First, that's my personal opinion, I'm sure the board doesn't share it, but that's my own opinion.
You have to look, when you're looking at parking, look at guest parking. Looking at. Space area. You're not doing for the driveway, then.
Yeah, that's what we'd like to see with the project is landscaping, green space.
In existing, it's in the backyard of all of them, the large, they put a fence there, just for the construction. And then so people had. That fence comes down, I mean, this is all. All one unit, some of the decent size are very large.
Still like to see landscaping on the front of Smith Street, something.
I definitely agree with you guys, between the two. Units, like playing something. Like a mulch thing, like you were.
Yeah, cause it's just, just to kind of break up those. Sounds like, uh, these two. You've got the two units there now on Smith Street, they kind of work into the neighborhood. The others come in to access the other way. Those even similar height higher. They're gonna be similar, like.
It's the exact same building, branding of space. So those go down. So. So the. The units, the new units would be two to five feet lower. They'll let Gail, Gail have a slope to it. But yeah, so they will stay under. I think, um, too, because, um. Well, I certainly, I, I, I understand. You're saying about that's, that's always a tough thing, um, you, you. Our multifamily ordinance, the zoning, the lot areas are fine for multifamily units, it's the, the minimum in the district, which that was per the. Plus thirty five hundred square feet for each unit on top of that. Um, which in this case for the spending here, it's a lot size of thirty three thousand square feet, this lot is almost. So the lot size is significantly larger than what's required for this amount of, this amount of. We, we need.
They don't have garages, so they're only providing the bare minimum parking, so we're talking about guest parking. I know, that's the minimal, they don't have a garage space. What we're talking about, does please consider providing some visitor parking spaces too, like when we have them there.
We have been talking recently about how poor spaces for a lot of these are, most of your tenants are gonna have two cars. So when people come, especially here, there's no on-street parking. So you need to show somewhere on there for them to park, I think if, if, if you. No, what I was gonna say was, that, that access, the access road that exists now. Uh, going back, going back in between the snow storage areas, if you had a, you know, a visitor parking, a four spaces or whatever. Um, you could probably do some sort of low impact design where you do the. We have it on our agenda for next, where they, you have, um, the, the, um. These grass pavers that you put in, the grass grows over them, so they're, so you could park on them without, you know, causing indents in the grass. Um, you could probably do something like that. I was talking about between the snow storage areas up here. Yeah, back, back up, back, back out into the. Or if you don't, you can move them further down against the house.
So we stayed with this layout. Having parking off of this.
I would say between, I would say between the two units. Yep, then you can remove a tree on each side or something, yeah. Okay, I have, you know, four spaces or something like that, and then. And then further down, if you, if for whatever reason, you can do Milton Street, or you decide to do Milton Street, you do them, do them here. When you just have, you, you have, you know.
We have a. Slow water question.
Oh, right, yeah. I do it between the two. So I think if, if this went away. I mean, you can get creative too, you can find somewhere else, I just.
But you can't, just turn around would be, but you, but you can't because it's a right of way, you can't block the right of way.
So I mean, you, you have room there, you might, may, maybe you move, maybe, maybe you move those units a little bit further up. And then you have somewhere on the south side, you have parking, you know.
We're just trying to have some.
There has to be landscaping between, you can't have a sea of parking. I mean, so, so you have a lot size here that I already said is. Yeah, so find room there. I mean, we're only talking about four, um, four, you know, three, four, five parking spaces for the new units, for the new.
Right.
And then, but then he mentioned, if it's too congested, you can't fit it, then it's.
Yeah, get rid of two, get rid of a building. Make the parking in between them.
Change your style.
I mean, if you say you can't fit them, then it's too dense and you can't do it.
And still have some.
But every parking space that's adequate, if you have four parking spaces, that takes away from green space and landscaping. And then the project starts to really involve pavement.
Well, that's, that's why I said, that's why I said you do some low impact design for, for, you know, grass parking spaces, we've done it before. We've never, people haven't developed them, but we've approved it before. Uh, and you know exactly. They have, they have like the.
Approved, but they haven't done it.
The Arnhem Farm was one of them, where they had low impact.
We have open cell payers.
Look at it a number, trying to eliminate spending options, street scenario, now we're looking, that parking is being done in, on the middle. The units on the side. The, the units, so the, so the part, something of a parking lot, like.
You're saying change the design.
You could change, yeah, you could change, you could change the design, so.
Of the existing, of the existing six street segments.
No, but.
Facing, 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 I think she's saying facing them this way, you're parking area in between.
Right.
We're not backing onto the street on those.
No, 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 no.
Trying to creepy about how you. Cause you have twenty feet between these buildings, you lose. The twenty feet between the buildings, or you do, um, three units and. And then you have parking. Everybody's parking all right in the front like that.
The bottom right hand side, you could put it right there, could you put a few?
Yeah, don't I own, I mean, technically, don't I? Acclaim half ownership to Gail?
We couldn't put a parking. We can't, because then it would technically restrict some parks there and. Like the max of that. Yeah, I mean, you can, you can, we can add a space. I'd like to ask them.
So, I guess, we like asking the question to your attorney and asking.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can add more pavement, then we can create more parking lots, sure.
I, I, like I said, I don't think you need to add pavement. I think, I think you can do it, but then a landscape area with low impact design, there's a, there's, there's a lot of other options, other than what we were just talking about. There's a lot of ways to park on grass or park on landscaping, um, it, it, it's, it's easily doable without more of her these areas. Right, so, so it doesn't need to be. Like for selling. A strike.
No, but, no, but they should, but when you do them, they should have, you know, visitor parking signs at the end of them, this is where visitors park. And people realize this is a parking spot for visitors.
Not that I wanna see more of her new area. However. Stupid private, it's a paper street. It's like, as long as you don't put structure.
But not park on it, you can't park on it, no, because you can't, I can tell you, you know, the only easements parking is not allowed within an easement, because then you're blocking access. If someone gets out of a car and leaves it there and you give them permission to do that, you're blocking access.
That would be the barriers.
That, that's the easiest solution, a hundred percent.
It's all trees, because we're literally not adding any impervious surface. Because what already having here. You could put four.
You can do it, do it, but if you can do it, do it, I just, you know, I don't know what your legal rights are to, to Gail either, so. And Gail's not going through, so I guess. I mean, I guess it doesn't matter until someone. I was gonna say, until someone actually wants to pave it, it doesn't particularly matter, because it's a question of. Yes, they have a right to pass and repass, but they can't, as long as they can walk around the car, that's all that matters, and stay on the right of way.
I think that would be, uh, the best spot for it, to minimize. Impervious surface, not adding anything else to this design, which if it comes, I don't know, overflow, I understand is needed if we could.
We're not, and I wanted to, we are not giving legal advice. There is about this, and there is about that, about what specifically what the can, can't do scenarios, but we know that in some cases you can. But so it's worth exploring, see what you can do, be a little more creative with this, so that it's, it's. A little less intrusive. On one side, I think. But again, if it's too dense, if you can't do it, we don't want an ocean of pavement either, but we do wanna see. For the units you're providing, we wanna see some visitor parking spaces. People are gonna have a guest. Parents are coming over.
Yeah, the most important thing is that we don't. We don't create a burden for the improved sections of Milton and Vine and Hancock and Yale. And, and you know, if, if this is on that side, you just wanna make sure that whatever parking we can handle on the site.
Is gonna be birthday parties.
First part of actually getting the jury, so.
And think about it, because you can change your building layouts too, right, so.
So, yeah, so we're gonna try to. The first thing is gonna be. That, um, the access to driveway pot, I think it's, if we can't. Coming off of Milton Street, adding parking.
And, and, and I would certainly say that I can set for cursory, I, I, I think that's a minimal, I think that's, that's kind of a starting point. I can tell you, when you're dealing with projects this size, visitor parking is a problem. Visitor parking is always, and it's not that this huge site, it's just. The closest area for someone to park on street isn't close to these six units. So it has to happen somewhere close, otherwise, people are gonna be, they're gonna be parking within the right of way, they're gonna be parking on your lawn, they're gonna be parking. You know, blocking Milton Street or whatever the case would be, so we just need to make sure that there is visitor parking on the site. Um, you know.
Even though you make it at one. Development. Those, it was access, like, kind of through this other side. Cannot hold the same, same style.
Now, gully style, I mean?
Farmhouse style, something, something that's not, you see how, because these are long deep, maybe something that's a little more shallow.
I'm just saying, it was like a grass. If the driveway stays.
That would give you a direction of where you're going and then.
You know, the things that guys. You know, the things that guys saw.
I mean, Paula and Pete, uh, I don't know if Pete just mentioned it, I, I, I thought I saw, I thought I saw your eyes when you looked at the picture. Paula just mentioned, I don't know if you heard her, that if it's not, if it's, if it's accessed separately, maybe do a slightly different design.
Like, add some little style to it, or farmhouse, or whatever, I know, whatever you think. But something attractive, but maybe, maybe it's because they're, you know, they're so deep here, but. It could be a little bit wider, less deep, or something, a little more. Play with. I'm not sure whether those buildings are, you know, three unit buildings.
Probably with footprint, I think just probably look, you know.
They're, they're fine, they're just, wow, I mean, the units you build on Smith Street just, they're, they're very worn out at all, yeah, they're very worn out.
Oh, but I just had that, I mean, that's the love, that's true.
I'm glad that there's a front, like a front.
I mean, obviously, if the porch wasn't there, they'd be a bomb, but they are a bomb.
I guess you guys, you guys are smart guys. You're, you know what, what if a house, you know what a house looks good, and a house that looks blah. The White House right there looks blah. You know, y- you can do a lot to that structure.
You don't even have like a, like a little window.
Yeah, you know, come on. You, you have, you have three units side by side, they look.
There's no usable board.
I can tell you, if these units didn't exist, if the, the two, two families didn't exist, and we're doing an entirely new project, the elevations. I, I was okay with it just because these already exist, but the elevations would have taken a forefront. In our discussion, we just did it with Water Street, we, matter of fact, uh, the developer went back three times. Because the first plan was something like this.
The peaks there could have like a different, uh, texture.
Yeah, you can do like shake in the gable, like boarded back, by all shake in the gable with a different color.
This to me, this to me, it's, it's bare bones looking. You know what it is? You got a house. On a plot, that's it. You know, I, I wanna, I wanna see something with some nice design in it, some thought in it, I, I would prefer to see it develop. It has, it has garages. A little nice little development. These people are gonna come home with their cars, they're gonna park, and they're gonna live in the house, that's it. They, they're not gonna go anywhere else, they're gonna live in the house, they're gonna get in the car, and they're gonna leave.
Got like no lone patio here.
You know, it's, it's got, it's got no appeal, geez.
Where's your trash? You know, that's another thing, we need to, our, our trash is going to be.
There's the, there's a dumpster showing at the end of the road.
It's at, it's at the end of the Park, that city. Uh, hold on, let me pull that out. Right here.
Oh, yeah, and where are the people in Smith Street putting stuff, that dumpster?
They have, uh.
So deal with that, because part of the development, it shouldn't be, so, should be a screening area for them too, they're part of the development.
With a trash barrel. So they can't have curb side pickup.
They can, just screen it, where they keep, you don't have garage. Cause they should not be visible.
We just did that with the other, one of the two families.
Screen it. We're saying for multi-families, you're screen.
We just did it with the, the two, two, the two.
It was single family, you're allowed to do that, you're not a single family, before we say you put it inside.
And, and technically, technically, and I won't push this, but technically, they don't qualify for city trash collection once it's a ten fam. Once it's a ten unit, you, it's only three units and below. Uh, but, at the same time, the city probably will never change that, so you'll probably still get trash collection there. Um, this was, this was one of the changes we had, one of the other developers did for the project they did. And they originally came up with something that looked like yours, the first time, and this is what they ended up designing, and this is what they ended up, they're hopefully building. Um, but I only bring this up because it's the most recent one, it's the one I remember.
Oh, no, the thing they first for us would absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, it was a box originally. Yeah, yeah.
Again, I'm getting serious again about the homes and their design. When you come back and present this again to the board, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be very particular when I look at the elevations. And I wanna see some improvement in building's design, different uses of materials, maybe different colored sidings on the same building. I think Paula's idea of a small patio out back is warranted, because you have nothing else, which you're offering these people, no garages. So. So, you know, something, something that could be a little more appealing to the board, that's gonna be the first thing I'm gonna look at, is a redesign of the looks of the building.
In keeping the fence line in between the two channels.
That's probably all, probably different. What type of, what type of fence is it now?
I mean, it doesn't matter, if you want it, I don't care.
Did it because construction background is a little separate.
I mean, it's, could they consider it being a little more private, so they think they're just out of the.
And, and generally speaking, I.
I think you have to have a completely open space to say, to say. Next, you know. Might even wanna consider landscaping. Like, so they have the vinyl fence in between, I'm like, you can keep them and even.
I'm sure, I'm su, I'm sure most people would appreciate grass there anyway. You have much more use of that grass than, than anything else. Um. I, I, yeah, I, I mean, I think.
To the trash pieces of, no, you can't have the dump. Trash. So. We wanna see them screened away.
Uh, this one's, this one's too long ago, they weren't, they weren't knocked by that, I was gonna say, where do they?
They keep it like right on the side at the end of the porch, um. Yeah, I'll, I'll work on those.
The problem we have historically with multi-families is that trash collection gets messy, so. As I said to the folks on Daniel Street earlier, the, the fence, the screening usually is twofold, it's usually. It's, it's keeping them out of view from the neighbors, which in this case is, is, I think, only two or three. But more importantly, it keeps, you know, debris from blowing everywhere, um, that tends to be a problem.
Not exactly attractive sitting in your front ditch like that, like, yeah, I, I got a budding trash cans on my front porch, like.
Like that guy has in his front yard.
Part of the problem is, a lot of people do. And, and it's, and, yeah.
I do too. And I have a garage.
Like, I, I screen, mine is, mine is screened behind shrubs, so you can't see them. Side of my house, I have shrubs, you know.
Well, I'll never rent the second half of my house because. I am buying with my trash.
So you have something like this, and it's like, oh, so my trash is my landscaping, okay. Go ahead.
Um, good suggestion, if it does go to. I don't think. Also, but the city can prove us people.
I don't know.
Or have to, you know, go to Milton, is it possible for you guys to put us people?
If we did, it would have to be on their property, because the city doesn't do speed bumps on city streets. Never, the city, there's no speed bumps in the city of Pittsburgh. Think of a street with a speed bump.
Parking lots.
CPW doesn't do them, because I believe, if I remember correctly, there, it's a, first of all, it's a liability. It, it's a hazard, and second of all, it, it's, it's difficult to claw around them. So the city does not, the city doesn't allow speed bumps anywhere.
And I'm not sure why we would give any speed, because it's just going from a parking lot.
Well, in Glass Street, I lived there for five, six years now. People speed on that street, a lot. And I was gonna bring it to the city, but they, somebody told me, like, they, they wanna, they're not gonna do it. Like, okay, I was gonna try to. With them on hand, buy speed bumps. That's the point.
Yep.
And then you sleeve them on the winter. But, you know, it's something that it's.
Yeah, you can't put them.
Yeah, the city won't allow you to do that. Uh, but, but I would say, but I would say.
My kid could hit with a car.
Oh, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's okay.
He gets in on the car, so I'm gonna bring the, the hospital bill to you.
I'm not saying it's okay, I'm saying, what I'm saying is, the city won't allow you to do that, that's all I'm saying. Because you can't, you can't put it in, you can't put something on a city street that's not yours. I'm just telling you what the city's gonna say, what I would say is, call the police. Make an official complaint, and if it keeps happening, keep calling them, eventually, they'll send, they'll send details down there.
Also, call your ward count, talk to your ward.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely, I, I.
There is, if there's a, uh. Feel that there's a traffic issue, then you would also speak with your ward counselor as well as the traffic. See if they can come up with a solution, and I'll, you know, submonitoring. Find a solution.
But, but definitely, don't let it go, if it's bad, make an official complaint, you gotta start somewhere. You gotta start with, hey, this traffic's bad, and the first time you might not get anything, call again the next week, the speeding's bad. Eventually, excuse me, eventually, I, something will happen, get your ward counselor involved, something will happen. I think your ward counselor's Counselor Cruz, probably. Yeah, I, I think it is. Derek Cruz, I believe, is your ward counselor, his phone number and emails on the city website, give him a call, he's, he'll be able to help you. Absolutely.
So.
I don't have, no, I don't have any interest.
Appreciate you bringing this to us, I mean, I. Certainly, I think with the, with your law configuration, something can be done in the moment. Okay, so, now just how best to do it.
I mean, I think it comes down to figure out if you do that access, if you can't, then go with what you got, and then just, just kinda look at some possibilities. I think you can, I think you can very easily, you know, shake up that design a little bit, even Martin, like he, like he was saying, you know. Change your colors, change your materials, make it, you know, some window locations, but if you don't, it would differ, it would look better. That's what we've been trying for with all these projects, it's just a little bit better than what we've been, you know, what we historically get. We've come a long way from the, you know. The three, three families in a row, in a complete box that. We had built a twenty-five years ago, and we're trying to get away from that.
Still, landscaping on Smith Street, I see that up.
Well, we are talking about a landscape, you know, between the two of the five, you know, I think that's an easy one.
I mean, generally speaking, I don't think anything.
Something more than a little push, like something. mature up and look nice.
She want, you want the building like redesigned, you want like a metal roof on the front, maybe like farmhouse ceiling, or? No, I just think, I just think, I just think, you, you just, you just need something that, that makes it stand out a little bit more, like. You know, like I said, I mean, what we've dealt with in the past, and these are just, these suggestions that we're already throwing out, I'm not saying it's the one that's for you, but we've had developers do. You know, um. Like, like vertical vinyl, the first two floors, and then the gable end, you do vinyl sheen. Or, you, you know, you have different window locations and different window designs, or, you know, that, that porch maybe changes just a little bit. I, again, I'm not saying a hundred percent that those are your easy answers, I'm just saying that I think you can tweak it a little bit, and just make it look. More than.
Stone deepness on the porch or something, like there's something a little different on. Interest.
I mean, I mean, and, and this isn't, I, I know the inside of your units looks very nice. I know the inside, I know the inside looks nice, because I've, I've been in them. I know the units themselves inside are beautiful, the outside is not great. And, and it's just isn't, I mean, I, every, matter of fact, I, I think someone asked me the other day about, we were talking about a project on Smith Street, they're like, oh, those things at the end. Like, those things at the end, yeah, I guess, you know, that's, that's what you get, I mean, they're, it's just a rectangle, that's all it is. The windows are, the windows are over each other, they're perf, it's perfectly symmetrical, it's just, it's, it's. If you had, if you had someone that was in kindergarten, draw a house, that's what they draw. I mean, really, that's all it is.
Better than the front and nothing else.
Yeah, so I, it's, and, and again, I, I, they look beautiful inside, and you build a good product, I saw what you did on Good Fellow, like you build. I've seen that one too, you build a good product, it's just, you know, and, and I don't think it's gonna take much, I don't think you need to redesign them, I don't think they need to look crazy, I just think. You know, you could just, you could just tweak them a little bit. Yeah.
Don't like the deck, like a sand prospector patio, or make the deck bigger.
Yeah. Yeah.
Throw lights to the window, so it's not just one of the.
Well, these are, these are six over six, but. Or you don't read, I can't see through the picture, but.
But it's so fucking like.
I mean, and, and again, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a re, it's, it's not a redesign, it's just that, it's just that, you know, make it, make it stand out a little bit, I don't even think it's gonna. Like I was saying to the other developer earlier, I don't think it's gonna cost her a tremendous amount more, it's just moving stuff around, maybe adding a window, you know, like you said, you had a good idea, if you, you know. You wanna do a metal roof, but on the porch, right?
I think the metal, the metal roof on the porch is a nice touch. Makes it, that, that looks good. We're, we're talking about simple things, like, for example, you might use two different shades of tan in the same building. Same, same kind of siding, but two different shades, you might use starlet table lamps. You might use an architectural detail on one of the games.
Sure, yeah.
You know, something, instead of, instead of matching the trim, or tan, white trim. To give it a contrast, you know, so, so that it's appealing to the eye. So, yeah, like I said a moment ago, you guys, smile, you know what looks? And you know it looks.
Four by four post look on the poachers, change of columns, well, something a little more.
We wrap. I do black gutters with a black drip edge, but it looks like, I did that up on Good Fellow, it's the most expensive new construction house in Pittsburgh, like just sold it. But, I mean, these all have black. Um. Gutters, which I think looks slick, and then the black drip edge, which looks awesome, but I just, when you said that, I was like. Like, oh, my architect, like, just scrapping everything and going.
No, no.
Sides are beautiful, you know, uh, the fireplaces, they're, they're nice, even the two nights.
They, they're very nice units, I, I, and, and, and I think all I'm saying is, just bring a little bit of that outside, because that's all we see, we don't see the inside of the unit. And the neighbors too, you know, the, you know, granted, the, I guess, the interior units, the neighbors are gonna see less of. Um, but.
These days, you can throw it into AI program, and they'll come up with.
And love.
Yes.
Check all the boxes, but, yeah, like. Should look like, at least, I don't know, a little more friendly.
Are you gonna maintain them as apartments, or maybe so?
Like I said, nothing crazy, just, just, just a little, some things here and there.
So, that being said, let's work, we get up.
Do we think we'll be ready for January is the obvious question. Yes. Yes. Um, I will tell you, I will tell you, I, I will tell you, we have a lot of stuff in January, and asking for continues is not a great thing. So if you're not sure, February would be.
Well, let us know, because you're gonna tap ask legal help.
I mean, if you could, if we could know two weeks before, that'd be great, then we could just automatically not get know this.
If we can start getting what it's on the agenda, you can make us laugh, again, that's fine, and then, uh.
So, so I can definitely tell you, we don't generally try to, we try to move things up as they go, so.
Continually kinda try to do those first.
Uh, we'll have, we'll have some innovation. Very least, I would have. Uh, a legal.
We, I, I think we have some of this stuff.
And then that's kind of a really big part of it.
Yes.
I don't think we'll be as long with the work tonight, I've had it though, I mean, a lot of good discussion here, and now it's more us following up on that discussion with the deal, and just. Uh, checking the box and, so I don't think we, so if we couldn't smooth it on there, that would be great, and then.
Make a vote, I'll see you in the January.
They should both say with the second, oh, those, roll call, both, all those, they would say aye, all those opposed say no, Amanda.
There might be a lag.
If you lost Alex, though.
No, I'm here. I'll say.
Alex.
Yeah, aye.
Oh, I'll, I'll say aye, I, it's really choppy, it's really choppy.
Yeah, the, the mic today has been cutting in and out for most of the evening.
All right, step in the rain, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and your input, really, thank you. Thank you.
Happy New Year's, guys, and Merry Christmas. Thank you, have a good night.
Yes. No, not for Rev, but for, um.
I think we got Summer Street.
Summer Street.
Summer Street this year.
So I think part of our approval last month was to submit the revised plan, please just and was just take off the parking spaces from the grass area.
Dale, you're here for Summer Street?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good.
At a later point, since you're not using it as an auto dealership just right away, then you could come back and then talk to us about. How what materials and things like that you would do so that we could see whether or not we would agree to have parking on a lawn. But to be simple, we said to just to move the other project along, we're like, just take it off the grass. So are you here this evening to talk about?
I didn't know that there was a decision to remove it off the grass. I I thought that Steve thought that it was still a possibility and. I I wanted to show you the existing site. Um, um, can I handle the screen?
Sure, I was just I was just pulling out your attachment about the grass.
Yeah. I mean, I I really think that, uh, you know, that existing area is all paved, uh, right now. And what we're proposing to do is to. Make it a green area that could be used for for.
Dale, I'm gonna promote you to a panelist. You can, once you do that, you can hit the share, you can hit the share screen button.
Okay.
I would say whatever you do, try and be concise.
Yes.
You are muted, Dale, now that you're a panelist. You just have to unmute yourself. Now he can do it.
My back. In my back. Can I get a video? You don't have video, right?
Say that again.
You have video?
Yeah, that's it's yeah, yes, we do.
Wanna see my face?
I can see you. Yes, we can.
Very good. All right. So I'm trying to share my screen here. Uh, if I. Someone else is sharing it says the host is.
Hold on, I gotta I gotta go up the screen. It's an administrator.
All right, any chance you see my screen?
Not yet.
Let's try screen one. How about that?
Oh, is that showing up on the screen?
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry.
Can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay, so what I'm trying to show you is all that gray area around, which is all pavement, you know, the road, there's a little thing near the sign. And there's a little grass strip that isn't shown on this plan in front of the what used to be the Dollar General store. And basically, there's nothing on site. So what the applicant wants to show you is, first of all, this is the. The green is where we're taking off pavement and the red is where we're gonna have to add pavement. To provide the width that we need on the on the back side where we're having that, you wanted that twenty foot width. And so then then let me go to the final plan. So. That's basically the questions that you asked, I think, was that we provided the responses from the three abouters. We provided those letters. I don't know if you've seen them or. Written material showing that they don't have the objection to it. The electrical company wanted to make sure that we did not put any berm in front of their entrance, and we haven't. Uh, the widths are shown for the entrances. It's twenty eight, uh, it's twenty four on the, uh. Uh, western side, and then in the back, it's twenty where to comply with the fire chief. And then we've added this additional green space that I showed you in the other picture. So the only thing. I think we complied with everything you asked for. It's just this, we I wanted to come back with this one question. If you say no, uh, you know, that's fine. But we're asking for the display areas and and what would be used is that material that you had originally opened up.
It was gonna take more discussion, and we wanted to see some photographs of what, you know, do you have it? Use it now and what does it look like?
All right, I don't have any photograph. I have that thing that somebody else was showing earlier, the, uh.
Well, that's from the manufacturer, but where is it actually? Did where is it be? Like what you're proposing? Show us an example. How does it look?
I, well, I thought if you looked at that brochure, it showed you the what it looks like. In other words, it's it's it can take the the weight of a vehicle and and it's.
Yeah, the mechanics of it. It's how really does it look? What's the application? Has your, um. Client used this previously, like what does this look like when cars parked on the lawn? Area like that in this using this material, so. And we know it can be done with whether or not it should be done.
Well, okay, I I'll just ask that you vote on that then, and I I I it it shows. Pictures of what you're asking for in that brochure that I sent you. It shows cars on this material. It shows how to install this material.
I I suppose I suppose the bigger thing is, I agree with you, Paula. We my notes from last month said.
Remove them from the.
My notes from last month said take the cars off the landscaping area, which means we talked about it, but that being said. It's not a hell I care to die on, so.
Do you wanna?
Yeah.
So we bring up the brochure, this what we'd like to do so we can see the actual photographs.
It's, oh, you want me to pull it up?
Oh, someone.
Do me a favor, Dale, just just hit the stop share button.
Yep.
Thanks.
So this is, there's really, there's three pictures of cars on it, and they all look, they all look computer generated. This is the only one that doesn't look computer generated. So I think these are actual cars. Uh, cause page one definitely is computer generated.
Okay.
Um, so I I mean.
Yes, page that first one is, but it's trying to show that, you know, the underneath material at the same time showing the same view, but you're right about that.
Yeah, so I mean, again, and I it's not, it's it's not something I care to have a big fight about. I'm fine.
On top of a private way, it's not on the main. And you're gonna have, and I think the intent is you're gonna have low landscaping in front of this as well.
That's true.
Right, so it's not like this is going up to the curb. You're gonna have a little landscaping just even in front of that. Is that correct, I think?
Yes, yes, it is.
All right. So there's still another, there's still like a landscaping buffer.
I'm like, since it's. While while I while I disagree with the need for them, I don't, I don't care enough that. Unless unless the board feels differently.
Is eight of them?
Yes.
Okay. Cause if you look at the landscaping plan, that was that was from the last meeting, this lands, so the area that's been surrounded by the bush and stuff that. But that's you're gonna actually have landscaping in that area, so.
There's some proposed trees in that front area.
Hey.
All right. Does the board have any other? Looks like they revised the eighteen feet to the twenty foot width, and they didn't provide the information about the, uh.
You wanna take a, do you wanna take a vote on officially accepting it, or are we just gonna?
Yes.
And make a vote to accept we revised.
Thank you. We made the second. Roll call vote. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed, Amanda.
Hi.
Peters, Paul, Tracy, Ellen.
Aye.
Alex.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for being patient, Dale and Mark. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Who else do we have online?
Uh, well, we had Mark, but he was for that. Um, let's see. What else? And that's it. Mark Wagner, but I'm pretty sure he was there for that.
So at what? So at fifteen forty six Frankfurt Street, they did, um, submit a revised plan, updated plan per the decision.
Every one of the numbers. In full.
So that's just, that's just another one of like. And I was there today, so it was an email of somebody was here taking pictures today. That was me.
Yeah.
Um, as 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 the guy was striping, they have a service actually stripings. Airbus.
Yeah.
So I don't know all the areas that are striped.
All right.
Um, and then it looks like they're gonna be planting in the rest of some landscaping tomorrow.
Yeah.
But again, so we're we're looking at just the plan, and it's gonna be up to Chantel and other departments, so they've complied with the plan.
Yeah, so when I went that that day, Paula, they had not. So they're doing it. Looks good.
Before we get to fee schedule, I just wanted to put aside, so we never got anything about, I know you said Rough Plains was gonna send something.
Never sent.
Well, my thought to Paula was, why are they gonna send something if they're closing?
I know, well, I kind of thought.
Yeah, one o two road is ceasing operations.
They are?
Yes.
And I think I said it last month, but if I get it, uh, Apothica, ninety nine Development Road, they closed.
Yeah, yeah, I think that things are getting a little bit.
Oh, definitely.
You know what I smelled driving by? Yes.
Everyone, I get that complaint all the time.
I've never smelled it. Yesterday I went and I don't know if it was raining, was it raining? It was nothing. Because my day was on my lunch out, and I was like. I'm like, all right, there was a car in front of me. I didn't know, like, if I.
I usually smell, I usually smell it on Water Street at the Salvation Army, and I've been told it's coming from.
Yeah, I I was going around.
Yeah, I smelled it today at the gas station and most of them.
Yeah, you can smell it there occasionally. Everybody will, I mean, to reach out to them, because every once in a while you can smell that. Yeah, yeah, that one's.
Something else to address.
It was just, I just have never noticed it on the airport before.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a surprise. I think we didn't get a date, though, right, Chantel?
No, no, we didn't. I will follow up again.
I can't tell you a drive past it.
So two months.
I drive past that every day, and there's less and less cars in that parking lot. I noticed that, like, ever since I found that out last week, every day I've been driving by like, looks like less today. I don't know, so.
Yeah. Yeah, it was like ready to go. Yeah.
All right. Diving into. We have no minutes, but diving into fee schedule. We just wanna at least start the discussion on that.
Uh, for the board members that haven't been aware, this is something that Paula and I have been working on for the better part of the year and change. The last update that we had during our fee schedule, I believe, was two thousand eight.
Yeah.
Um, and since that time, uh, obviously, our expenses have gone up tremendously in the cities. I did, I did a D R review on our city expenses of seventy eight percent.
Yeah.
So it it we we're, we gotta catch up. The the one big one is, we don't pay, we don't cover, we don't make the applicant pay for advertising costs. And what was the number? Hundred, hundred and fifty dollars?
It's roughly a hundred and thirty dollars for Alan, nice machine for.
Yep, so. So we, the big one, what started this was, we needed to add advertising costs in our fee schedule, which a lot of towns do. Um, and so that was the big one. And the other one was. A lot of miscellaneous changes. So if if you guys saw, there's a proposed, uh, there's a proposed, um.
So the gist of it, so the board can adopt these on, um. Simple majority. Uh, change swallows and including a fee schedule. However, regarding special permit fees, the special permit fees are underneath the auspices jurisdiction of the city council. So, uh, the thought is we would be putting together a table of updated fees and just present the entire table to them, even though they would totally suggest a special permit piece, just to. The updates, but so this is like the starting of discussion. I already have. Another updates to to this, but, um. It was actually thinking about even adding, and we have our standard categories and our own subdivision pieces of it, and then we have special permits. We've got. Uh, such as the budgeted permits, eighty flexible family and standards. Um, we we had not broken out. Some of these larger project types of permits, wireless communication facilities, another hundred and seventy five. Um, marijuana establishments and large scale, not with solar, thinking that. My thought is that they should be broken out, and I actually go with the total fees even higher than what's even looking there, six, seven, fifty, looking at other communities. They are like even for marijuana establishments, like Littleton's like thirty, thirty five hundred dollars. And particularly looking at that. Um, there there's pretty much no more host agreements any longer, so we're not getting any of that. We also have a limit on the number of retail, so it was kind of like. Looking at it, it's like a little device. It's like the industry that we're moving about, so it should be a higher price. Um, or permit for such an establishment to some degree. Others even have reoccurring, um, fees. And I also put a link in and we should take, we should take a look at, even with CCC charges for an application fee. Um, at the state level, it is fifteen, at least fifteen hundred dollars. Plus, and depending on how how the square footage of the groups. Um, in regards to that, and for a change. So it's, but it's a minimum like. Starting fifteen hundred bucks. In different application fees for different sizes of the tiers. Marijuana product manufacturing fifteen hundred dollars. For, and then they have the annual license fees of ten thousand dollars. I'm just saying, and yet we get no host agreement upon that, you know, but the state's getting, it's kind of like. Who can, you know, where's the benefit? And we're not getting particularly the establishments that don't, that are not retail. Where you get a certain percentage from the retail sale. Still, you're not having any. So there's stuff to think about when you think. The thing about large scale ground mounted solar. Um, I think it was some gardener actually has like, he's a base speed. Higher than seventy, then you have a perigear. Perigear of solar red. Charging so that it can have the size. Solar a thousand, you know, whatever the size is. These applicants, the same thing, wireless communications and thinking of the monophones, not the. Because of that, but it's it's like, those are big, these are big. Um, corporations that which have, since it's so. Looking at it from from that or in the, you know, when talking. The scale of something, large scale ground model is is just huge. Um, marijuana establishment is, it's it's a distinct. Buildings, but we're dealing continuously to this day. Why haven't we continued about odor mitigation? And a lot of time being spent by many departments about this. So it's not just about like, what is this covering? There's no more fees being paid. We're spending a lot of resources dealing with this. Um, so it's just trying to, trying to balance resources and time spent on. As well as separating that out from, um, legal and advertising costs. And then also we'll be discussing, um, technical reviews that feature, as well as even construction, um, supervisory. Some communities have in order to find some large projects to actually have a third party. Check in and oversee. And they actually, uh, I think Franklin does that, and you get, they get a quote, it's like they're required to put in for when they're about to start a project, putting. Each one, a quote for it and. Positive. Now, they'll go fund it at the end. So those are those just the types of pieces to. Think about. So I thought it might be worthwhile to maybe break out some of those pain points and think about what type of. Fees would be created in those those cases. Yeah, we look at the other special permit fees, you know, do you limit, when they're looking at special permits, like it says two hundred, like a plus fifty for dwelling in it, but maybe we say over X amount of units fifty, like it's. The set fee, then certain amount. Certain numbers, so you know, for a two family. Neighborhood business district, maybe.
Well, yeah, it's two family multiple residential. So that was, that was one of the issues I had that. When a modify, when one of the modifications was, when they, and it might have been Liz's, where it's two hundred dollars plus fifty dollars per dwelling and up to, she had two thousand.
it's two hundred dollars plus fifty dollars per dwelling and up to, she had two thousand, you should, I don't care about the Two hundred, in a lot of these cases, the first figures are arbitrary. Meaning when you say two hundred plus fifty dollars a dwelling, it should just be fifty dollars a dwelling unit up to an amount plus legal and advertising costs. The two hundred number doesn't come from anywhere, it's like, it's, 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 it, the number doesn't mean anything. You gotta tie it to, you know, what the permit is, I do understand that number. I understand the two hundred dollars for residential special permit, because you can't have fifty dollars per dwelling unit, like if it's a single family. Or if it's a special permit for something that doesn't have a unit.
So I'm just saying, so that's why you look at a base for special permit.
But the base numbers are arbitrary, like keep it, keep it with the way it was then.
Well, I think it's, no, it shouldn't be arbitrary, there's so much time from
No, I'm saying there's no basis for you saying two hundred dollars. Hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, three hundred dollars is the same figure. It, there's no basis for, it's two hundred dollars because it's costing someone something. It's the same thing, it's, why is it five hundred dollars?
Should be hundred, actually two
No, it shouldn't, no, so, so
Should be, because there's a lot of
So we need to, that's why you have
Not just say not, we're volunteers in the board, but there's a lot of department time.
We need to weigh this, but it's, it's the employees are paid, and city employees are paid via property tax. We need to weigh this, we need to weigh these fees to not make it cost prohibitive to do things.
Lomester's is two hundred and fifty dollars special permit application, right? We just, ours is a hundred.
Right, and twenty five dollars dwelling, they don't charge dwelling unit, they charge park space.
And then, and then, like separate advertisement.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but maybe over a certain number of dwelling units, you do do that.
And, so all I'm saying is, all I'm saying is, you raised a bunch of them, we just need to be cautious about how much we raise things. I, I can almost picture it now when it gets to the council, although they're only approving special permits. And we have the authority to raise these on our own. It's, you don't want the conversation to be, why did you, what did you base these numbers off and why did you go up five hundred percent? That, that's all, I'm, I'm just, I, I'm just saying, there needs to, there needs to be a rationale other than, it needs to be higher than it is now.
Five hundred dollars, minimum.
Yeah, but for every, I've, I've been through, I gave you the list, I went through fifty cities, for every one that's over, there's one that's on. So it's, it's very difficult to base it on one, you know, one town, I will say, Gardner's seem to be locally the most recent, cause they updated in twenty twenty. And their seven hundred fifty base for everything, plus fifty dollars, a lot of twenty five dollars per square foot of building space. Um, so they are substantially higher than we are.
Yeah.
Lomester generally speaking is substantially lower than we are, um, with some, some their, their preliminary definitive subdivision plans are much higher. They charge five hundred for definitive plan, fifty dollars a lot, twenty five, two hundred and twenty five dollar advertising fee. Uh, but
Wister's a stupid
Yeah, my point is, we, we, we can go backwards all day, my point is, we just need to be cautious with how we, um, change these. So, basically I had said something to Liz, Liz, I think, made some changes, the highlighted portions on this, the one that's on the screen right now. And then Paula had some suggestions, uh, and I'm not against all of that.
Some of my highlights, but I didn't put six, my, mine were double than that, so.
That's what I'm saying, that what's on the screen is Liz's. And then yours didn't get uploaded.
Alright.
So this is yours, cause I printed yours from the email. Paula's email was, uh, twelve hundred for wireless communication facilities, fifteen hundred for marijuana establishments. And fifteen hundred plus a hundred dollars per acre of solar array. You almost wanna tie, if you wanted to solely, you almost wanna tie it to the amount of money.
Some, some towns do. Look at it that way too, but it's, it's just like, it's like compensating for like the amount of and scale and land disturbance and other aspects like
No, no, I
I, why should it be, yeah.
I told you on the phone yesterday, I don't have a problem with those three necessarily, because we're talking about large corporations that are in front of us for those three. Um, but, but again, we also wanna be
They're also not, it's not like, you know, multi-family areas, like greater, but also can cause a lot of, a lot of lot of, uh, ongoing issues.
Alright, do we wanna park this for January?
Bring that up still, but, but does anybody, I, what I want though We going in the right, right direction for things, is there anything else?
And bear in mind, this will, although again, they don't have the authority, this will be in front of everyone in the city, the city council and the mayor and everyone is gonna look at this and say, oh, this is what the planning board did, so just keep that in mind.
I mean, is there some, like a, you know, anybody have a philosophical approach to when they look at fees or looking at cost perspective, we're trying not to, we're trying not to like pay for things, number one, so it's a minimal, you have to break even, but also it's kinda like, you know, should you be, um for the, for the number of permits being it goes into the running of the apartment.
What's the, our
It's kinda like, I would be interested in if you, like took any, like looking at some of these, look at some of the agendas, the last couple of agendas that we have. What was the difference and then what would be the difference in fees?
Sometimes it will focus a lot, especially, and without being over burdensome to the, you know, we should take a look at that.
It's like looking at the big family, what would the difference be? I'm not sure if it makes sense to have a, um, something on, you know, should there be a site plan for parking plans, will it? If someone has like, you know, an eight unit, eight unit and looking at the parking plan, you don't wanna be charging X of, you gotta go for dwelling unit. If you go over and about.
Right, or you could go by the amount of parking or the, I'm driving a circle.
Yeah, but we're not intuitive, constantly, counter like
Yeah, I understand. Definitely, I wonder if what the basis also, you can't arbitrarily raise fees without reason, I think it may all, that you're curious like, what you know, why less than one system? But I don't know.
Even administratively, about what was trying to be spent on certain, since even when you're doing, um, by, um each night request, things like that. Up to a certain, up to a certain hours, you know. How much times it takes you to change something, takes you beyond that, then you turn your time.
Well, I will say, when I started the process, I did a spreadsheet, the old Cento, spreadsheet was the base fee that it is now, and then, and then I started with how do you figure, how do you calculate costs, that's why I looked at how much the city's expenses have gone up in that time, like seventy seven percent or whatever the number was. So then I took, this is what it would be if it was a fifty percent fee increase, this would be a hundred percent fee. And base it off, the city's expenses have gone up so much since that period, then they, the, the fee should go up that much in, in that period, um, they, they're not, most of those categories aren't necessarily out of line with some of these numbers, I don't have them. Um, that was the first, that was the first
You know, there's some in higher and some low.
Yeah, so we went through like a bunch of, a bunch of towns, yeah, and I mean, it's, it, but you're, I mean, I've, I've looked at it so long, like like I told Paula, I could pick out a town right now and say like Gardner, Gardner's much higher than this. You could pick out five towns in one floor, it's like you could do that all day, it's three hundred fifty one cities and towns, like it's not even as simple as going around us. It's like, Lomester's fees are buried in their website and they're so hard to find. Uh, they don't have a fee schedule like we have, they have, it's terrible. Um, but when you go like even Wister, Wister's the same way, Wister has all of these links that you have to click on and each one brings up the fee. So it's very time consuming to go through all of them, but, anyway.
Yeah, some of these are just
Yeah.
Littletons are, are ginormous. Thirty five hundred dollar marijuana establishment sheet and two thousand dollar annual fee.
When I did mine, I picked the like ten towns that were the same size, so it's like, it's feasible and I figured they were all one.
So let's say, I mean, if we want to think in economics, it's like, we don't you don't want to be a deterrent to development for those that we're looking at for our, I mean but then also we have others that are coming to, you know, you wanna welcome people to, but then we don't wanna be taken at a disadvantage either, just because yeah, oh, we have more land, so yeah, we can do ten solar projects for another but wouldn't say basically, you know, two hundred dollars, hundred dollar fee. It's like, really? That should be, be looked at a little bit better, where it's like, what it, what's, what are you looking at, give, is the, what's the trade off?
The only one that I thought that stuck out to me that changed from, from our original was the Cedar Road Act, went from a hundred to a hundred dollar revision, plus advertising cost. Um, ninety nine percent of the time it's one property owner, it's clearing the tree or two trees to like fix their driveway and
No, ninety nine percent of the time it's units, that's why I don't
No, most, no, most of, most of them are, most of them are people putting, most of them are people putting in a driveway or
They're putting in five driveways, so they're not feeling bad, it's not been like The, the city's been requesting, so then the city
The most recent one was an individual property owner.
But the city's doing it, the city's, it's the city.
Oh, we, we applied for that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, in that case.
That kind of thing, so it's more like, they're not some, subject to the, to the fee, so. That was, so that was kind of like some of that, like, well, who's asking, you know, our Yeah, yes, and it's probably ways and that's giving permission to do that, so I'm, that people says, okay, I have to miss this.
Like it's, we used to call it, it's like, I think of the guy on Monday, I'm really putting a second driver. Came back. Anyway, that's fine, it's, so people think about it, that's the gist of it, it's like, everyone think about it, we'll, we'll get back to it, yeah.
So I, but so, so this is some of the, some, you know, think about that, research a bit, I've been like looking at my, and that's why it's like, well, maybe more common things we do, like parking plans and things, you have more like a fee to be, cause it's like, you don't wanna you know, be raising something you think arbitrarily, but if something is doing it do something for unit, is there like a cap for the thing, like, well, it's fine up to ten, and whatever number of units, it's this much, this thing, so you're still promoting what's going on and you're still looking at with some of the, the
Alright, um, I will, we'll continue it to January, but I will say one thing, and having talked to Liz recently, she wants to stop sooner or later, so hopefully we do it in January.
Well, then it still won't be done because
That's why, that's why she wants to stop sooner or later, it's gotta go to the council.
Yes, so I'm the same, we're not even approving anything, it's just we we're not, we need to get it set.
We would absolutely be approving. Okay, yeah, we can do that, I, I I thought we were approving the ones that we had authority over, which is almost everything on that except for three things. And
And, yeah.
And just leave those blank and say, this is our recommendation to you, which is what we're basically doing. So.
So let's vote to, um, Karen? To me, to Karen, whoever's in favor, say aye.
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 Aye.